Let me know when you're ready. You're good?
Yeah.
Welcome, everybody. We called the order of city council meeting for November twenty eighth. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
Like to lead in the black and United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. Uh, roll call Cindy.
Honorable Mayor Grover.
I'm here.
Councilmember Oberhauser.
President.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Present.
Councilmember Bartels.
Here.
Councilmember Weissman.
She's on Zoom.
She's on Zoom. Councilmember Guard.
Present.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Postuma.
Present.
Hey Jill, can you just say something so we know we can hear you? Say hi. Jill, can you hear us? Hey Jill, can you hear us?
Under a chat message.
I'm trying to text her. I can't get on my phone.
Okay.
Can you email her?
Who has the Zoom that could send her a chat message?
So make sure she can hear everything. Jill, can you hear us?
Can anybody?
Dan Curley, can you hear us?
That's not good.
This is Matt Hobson.
What sound is coming through?
Who can hear us? Corinne, can you hear us? Good.
Yep.
Got it?
Did you? Everyone else can hear us.
All right.
Tell her to unmute.
Hey Jill, are you muted?
Volume down.
No, her computer might be muted. That's probably our turn up, turn up the volume.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm gonna.
Here.
Can't hear you, Jill.
I would restart.
Thanks, chief. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move on. Hopefully she can. Fix that. Uh, next on the agenda is citizen comments. Um, this is an opportunity for the public to comment to our city council. I did have Corinna Donnerberg mention she would like to speak. Corinna? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Yes, uh, my name is Corinna Donnerberg and I live in Cheney. I'm here today to express my concern about the nature of content posted by the Cheney Police Department Facebook page. Specifically, I'm most concerned about a post from November thirteenth, which shows a graphic video of a person experiencing a medical emergency and CPD and Cheney Fire EMS rendering aid. I'm shocked and appalled. The department chose to post such a video of a community member. I asked whether CPD had obtained consent from the individual shown and did not receive a response. When I asked about the purpose of showing such personal upsetting footage, the response from the official account was, quote, "The primary goal of sharing the video was to educate the public and raise awareness about the life-saving intervention provided by first responders, particularly in cases of overdose by using Narcan. The footage serves as a powerful testament to the critical role that Narcan plays in saving lives and underscores the importance of having access to this life-saving medication," end quote. "I am thankful that our community has first responders to provide emergency medical intervention and wholeheartedly support the use of Narcan. I keep Narcan in my office at work and would encourage anyone who thinks that they might ever need it to get some to have on hand. Just don't keep it in your car as it should be stored at room temperature. Locally, folks can get free Narcan from the West Spokane Wellness Partnership, Spokane Regional Health District, or MHA Speak Out, Speak Up. It's also available over the counter at many pharmacies. If you have Apple Health, there's no copay. Interestingly enough, none of this information or other information about resources to support folks experiencing substance use and abuse was shared in this post. Is it necessary to show graphic footage of a community member in distress to educate the public and raise awareness? I can't imagine myself or a loved one being in that position and then having the video posted all over Facebook. It's such a violation of privacy and basic human decency. While I can't speak to the department's motives, I have to wonder whether CPD is focused more on protecting and serving the people of our community or on trying to convince us that the job of protecting and serving is a really hard one. Thank you."
Thank you, Corinna. Anybody else wish to comment? Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm Jackie Randall.
Can you, could you, could you stand up here? Hi Jackie. Can you just, just for the record, if you could just state your name and your address for the record. Come on up. Come on up. There we go. Hi Jackie.
Jackie Randall. I live here in Cheney on Gary Street. And I'm not certain this is the right time for me to ask this question because it's pertaining the, um, Parks and Rec, um, budget.
Uh, we're gonna have a budget presentation for Parks and Rec today, actually.
Right. And so should I ask my question now?
Uh, you can. However, we are, it is gonna be an open public, uh, hearing, so you'll have, you'll have an opportunity to speak during that.
Okay, I'll do that. Great. Thank you.
Thanks. Not to stop you from commenting, just that there is, there's gonna be an opportunity for you, for sure. Excuse me. Okay, anybody else wish to comment to our city council? Anybody online? Going once, going twice. Okay, let's move on. One last, uh, volume check. Jill, can you hear us?
I am here now. I'm so sorry.
Welcome, Jill. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda is our November fourteenth regular city council meeting minutes. Um, you've all had an opportunity to review those. If there's no corrections, I'd entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. A motion and second to approve our minutes from our November fourteenth regular city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See Jill raised her hand. Good. Our minutes are approved. Next vouchers Cindy.
Total vouchers of one million, nine thousand, two hundred, fifty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Your honor, the finance committee reviewed these items. I would move approval.
Second. Thank you. A motion and second to approve the vouchers as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you Cindy. Vouchers are approved. We do not have any claims for damages. Uh, you can see there are a couple small contracts there that I signed. Uh, one was for diamond asphalt paving for the, uh, solid waste area of patching of the asphalt there. And then a rent increase for the property that we own on twenty-five Anderson Road. Next up, an information item, and this is FCA. I think Todd's gonna give this. Todd, you're gonna give a presentation.
Yeah, I will kinda enter this. Uh, we have Matt Hobson from FCS. Uh, he's gonna get his PowerPoint all loaded up, but, um, as you recall, with last year, we did the, uh, the water and the electrical rates. Uh, Matt can kind of conducted that. And then shortly after, we amended the contract to take a look at wastewater and solid waste. So tonight, we're kind of following the same suit. About this time last year, uh, we did a presentation and took a look at, uh, the rates. You'll see on the wastewater side, we have, uh, two kind of rate structures, one without reuse and one with reuse in there. And then we just have, uh, one rate structure for solid waste. So I'll let Matt kind of get started. And at the end of the presentation, if you want to, any direct staff, if they wanna come back with a, uh, resolution or anything, your desires. I'll start with Matt and then, uh, but answer questions after.
Thanks, Todd. Welcome, Matt. Mr. Hobson. Sorry, that made me.
There we go. Uh, how's the volume? Uh, can y'all hear me?
Good.
Good. Okay, great. Uh, as Todd mentioned, and for the record, uh, my name is Matt Hobson. Uh, I'm the project manager with FCS Group who supported Todd and his team to complete the utility rate studies for the sewer and the, uh, the solid waste utilities. Um, as Todd also mentioned, uh, our team was a team that also supported the city last year for the water and electric utility rate studies. Uh, FCS Group by background, we are a consulting firm, uh, that specializes in local government financial planning, um, and specifically on, on rate studies. Been in business now for over thirty-five years and have completed, uh, over four thousand similar studies in the Pacific Northwest. Uh, the presentation today is divided into two sections. Uh, we'll first go over the results of the wastewater utility rate study. And then we'll switch gears and talk about the solid waste utility. I, I think we'll spend more time on the sewer utility. There's some fundamentals we'll talk through to the, on the sewer utility that, that also apply on the solid waste side. So we can move a little faster on the solid waste portion. Now, the presentation itself, um, is based on the rate study which we performed, and that is based on key principles of public utility rate setting. Uh, there are three key steps and they are sequential in nature in that we, we build upon the result of each step to inform the next step. And so that first step we look at is, uh, for in each utility, we're looking at them independently. Um, we look at overall revenue needs and we define that in, in, in rate geek speak as the revenue requirement. And what that is, is just the overall financial obligations of the utility, uh, that are required to fully fund it on an ongoing sustainable basis. So it's not just operating expenses. We're also looking at any debt obligations, um, compliance with the city's internal financial policies, um, as well as a capital funding plan, uh, for upcoming capital projects. Once we identify that overall revenue need for the utility, we'll move to the next step, which is a cost of service analysis. And what this serves to perform is, um, an equitable distribution of that revenue requirement to the different user groups of the utility. And we're, we're on, on the trail to answer a fundamental question is that are there cost differences that the utility incurs to provide service to different users of the, of the utility? And are those cost differences adequately reflected in the rates we charge? Uh, we use the cost of service analysis as a policy tool to inform some potential rate actions that are specific to different user groups. And that makes up the third step, which is the actual rate design. On the actual rates and charges that are assessed by each utility in the form of fixed rates and, and variable rates. So what we'll jump into the sewer utility first. Uh, to build the revenue requirement for the sewer utility, we developed a financial forecast of the utility's revenues, um, the operating expenses, those recurring expenses tied to salaries, benefits and supply costs. We identified the overall cost of the capital program over the next five years. And then also looked at the utility's financial reserve requirements. To do this financial forecast, we had to rely on several assumptions. Um, for example, looking at various cost inflation assumptions as produced by, uh, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, um, as well as regional in cost inflation indices. Our starting point for the forecast for both the water and the sewer utilities was the twenty twenty-three budget. We looked at revenues as they exist today, and we do account for future growth of those revenues as folks move into the city. Uh, our forecast of new revenue is based on about a half a percent annual growth rate. Based on those cost inflation indices, our operating expense forecast is, is we have it, uh, set at around three to four percent per year, uh, growth in, in expenditures. With any enterprise fund of the city, we want to make sure that, uh, there are sufficient reserves to manage just the, the month amount of cash flow of that utility. And so as a basis for a minimum financial reserve, uh, it is assumed at twenty-five percent of annual operating and maintenance expenses. For about six hundred thousand dollars, and that's the, the minimum level we want to have in the bank, uh, to just to manage the, the ups and downs of the financial performance of the utility. Uh, as Todd mentioned, we're showing, we're gonna be showing two different scenarios for the, the sewer utility. Uh, one including the, uh, reclamation, water reclamation project and one without the water reclamation project. The reason we're showing both is, uh, that project represents the lion's share of the capital program over the next five years. Of the twenty-seven million dollars in capital projects for the sewer utility, the reclamation facility represents, uh, more than twenty-five million of that cost. Also point out that the, the assumed funding source for the water reclamation project is primarily from, uh, low interest loans and grants from the state. Now, along with, uh, identifying total operating costs to provide, uh, utility services, rate studies also help us identify the long-term funding options uh, for the repair and the replacement of critical infrastructure required to provide sewer services. Um, these rate studies lay out a roadmap to fund system replacement and upgrades. And, and that roadmap and a challenge of getting to that roadmap is one of the most pressing issues, uh, for public utilities across the United States. And the reason for that is that, uh, most local utilities have assets in the ground that are approaching or have already reached their useful lives. And in many cases, the original cost of these assets were at least partially funded by federal funding back in the sixties and seventies. The chart here on the slide, you can see that, that red line that runs left to right. Um, that's the share of local government funding for infrastructure that was provided by the federal government. You can see just a precipitous decline over the last fifty years. And what that means is that local governments are more and more responsible for picking up the lion's share of replacing their infrastructure. And, and that funding source generally comes from rates. Um, and the American Water Works Association produces an annual survey on the state of public utilities across the country. And consistently, the financial challenge of replacing and repairing infrastructure is one of the top three issues facing, uh, utilities across the country. So to confront this challenge, uh, we recommend that utilities build within their rates an annual contribution to their capital program for the purpose of replacing infrastructure. Now, the target amount of this cash contribution is always a policy choice. Um, but we do recommend a minimum target of at least the cost of annual depreciation. This minimum target recovers at least what you put into the asset at the beginning, uh, when it was first put into service. Now, if data is available, we do recommend targeting higher contribution levels, perhaps at the replacement cost of those assets or tied to an asset management plan. But at the very least, setting that target to the annual cost of depreciation for the system. So identifying an adequate level of funding for system reinvestment is just one of several financial policies that we evaluated within the rate study. Um, for lack of a better term, these financial policies, they, they serve as guardrails, uh, for the prudent financial, financial management of the utility. They're critical to independently and sustainably fund these utilities. And they're often key metrics that bond rating agencies evaluate when they're assessing the creditworthiness of the utility. I wanna briefly go through some of these, uh, that, uh, for the sewer utility. So that the minimum operating reserve that we're trying to hit each year of the forecast, as I mentioned earlier, is based on twenty-five percent of operating and maintenance expenses, which is about six hundred thousand dollars per year. And that's a kind of a, a minimum savings account level we want to maintain. In addition to the operating reserve, uh, another financial policy that's recommended is maintaining a minimum capital reserve that's designed to offset, um, one-time project overruns, um, emergency repairs or replacements. And the target funding level, the minimum target funding level we're recommending is one percent of the original cost of the system, which would be equivalent to about three hundred thousand dollars. I've already talked about system reinvestment funding, the idea of proactively funding the replacement of assets. The utility currently does not have sufficient revenues to support such a policy. We are recommending within this next five-year rate setting period, a active plan to phase in funding levels equivalent to system rein, uh, to, to annual depreciation with the goal of targeting the year twenty thirty, um, where the utility's rates would be sufficient to fund, uh, annual depreciation of the system. With the goal of targeting the year twenty thirty, um, where the utility's rates would be sufficient to fund, uh, annual depreciation of the system. So the revenue requirement analysis provides that outlook for the utility's ability to fully fund all of its obligations. With revenues at existing rates. We froze rates where they're at today. How long can they sustain the utility? Uh, the purpose of this slide is to summarize the sufficiency of existing rates to support the utility. Um, you'll see kind of the individual components of the revenue requirement in the table. And then below the table, I have a legend there. Um, you know, a filled-in circle, what that tells us is for that particular revenue requirement element. Existing rates are sufficient to fully fund current levels as well as levels over the next five years. Um, if it's an empty circle, what that means is we don't have sufficient resources from existing rates. To support, uh, the cost at current levels as well as into the forecast. So at a high level, I'm in evaluating the needs of the sewer utility, what we identified. Is that existing rates are sufficient to support operating expenses. But they're insufficient to support the all other, um, obligations of the utility, including paying existing debt service. Maintaining reserves, both operating and capital, and supporting the capital improvement. So I'll walk through these slides here. These are more graphical representations of, um, the table I just showed on the previous slide. There's going to be two of these slides, uh, one that shows the revenue requirement needs with that water reclamation project. And another slide that excludes it. So the slide on, on deck right now is our projected revenue increase needs. Assuming, uh, no water reclamation project is included in the CIP. The columns that run, uh, along each, uh, along the, the graph represent those different revenue requirement components, whether it's operating expenses, uh, debt service. Uh, and supporting long-term system reinvestment. That horizontal black line, the solid black line that runs across the graph. That's our forecast at revenues if we don't adjust rates. And so you can see on the chart here that, that every year of the forecast, that black line is below the columns, and that indicates that. Existing rates simply just aren't sufficient to fully fund the utility. Um, and that's why we're projecting seven point five percent annual revenue adjustments needed to support the sewer utility through twenty, from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight. So it's seven and a half percent each year if we don't include the water reclamation project in the forecast. If we do include the project in the forecast, those seven and a halves turn into eight point seven five percents. The key difference here is that if the, uh, city were to, to construct the, the reclamation project. While the majority of the funding would be in the form of grants, um, about a third of the project cost would be in the form, would be funded through long, uh, term low-interest loans. Uh, if you look at the graph, there's a bright blue column in the outer years, and that represents the new debt service that would be tied to those low-interest loans. Um, and it's, it's due to that, uh, increased, uh, debt need that drives the, the somewhat higher rate revenue requirement for this scenario. So in summary, uh, without the water reclamation project in the CIP, we're looking at seven point five percent annual rate adjustments. And with it included, looking about eight point seven five percent annual rate adjustments. Now, it's important to note that with either scenario. Uh, the utility's financial reserves are currently well below targeted funding levels. Want to make sure that we're keeping those reserves at least at twenty-five percent of operating expenses, and right now they're well below that level. So the five-year rate plan that we're recommending for both scenarios does establish a pathway. To return those reserves back to those minimum target levels. Now, the city could choose, uh, to replenish these reserves more quickly, but it would require higher rate increases in the short term. Um, we also want to point out that among other roles of these reserves. Uh, financial reserves provide a cash liquidity cushion that helps manage fluctuations in revenues and expenses throughout the year. And so without adequate reserves, um, the sewer utility may have to rely on financial support from other city resources. Just to manage that month-to-month cash flow that we typically see, um, uh, in a utility. We don't incur expenses evenly throughout the year and nor do we receive revenue, um, equally or evenly throughout the year. That kind of concludes that first step for the sewer utility, um, the overall revenue needs over the next five years. The second step of the rate study was looking at an equitable distribution of the revenue requirement to different user groups of the utility. Uh, the cost of service analysis, uh, the purpose of that is to answer two fundamental questions. Uh, the first question is, uh, do cost differences even exist to serve different groups or classes of customers? For example, uh, we have residential customers connecting to the system. We have commercial customers and schools. Um, Eastern Washington Universities also contributes and is part of the system. And so we want to identify the different costs to provide service to these different groups of customers. And then also evaluate whether our existing rates adequately reflect the differences in cost to provide that service. Uh, the method that we use is widely followed and recognized within the rate sitting industry. In that we look at a three-step process. First, we, we, uh, itemize or allocate the revenue requirement into discrete activities of, of a sewer utility. Mainly putting into four buckets, a customer bucket. To be those costs that don't really vary based on a customer's contribution to the sewer flow. For example, customer billing. And then we'll look at the actual flow costs of collecting and treating the volume of, of wastewater flows at the treatment plant. And then two, uh, strength-based, uh, costs tied to the, uh, total suspended solids and the biological oxygen demand of, uh, of different flows coming into the system. We then allocate the cost of each of these activities to the different user groups, you know, be it a residential group. Uh, the commercial business group or, or, uh, multifamily. Based on their unique contributions to each of these activities, um, throughout the year. What we want to identify is, is if the cost of service exceeds the revenue we generate from that class. What that tells us is there's likely a subsidized, uh, there's a subsidy occurring in which that class is being subsidized by other classes. Uh, conversely, if we find the cost of service is less than the revenues from that class, that class is likely subsidizing other classes. Uh, and the goal of the cost of service analysis is simply to eliminate any unintentional cross subsidies. And so that, uh, the rates are cost-based and promote rate equity. The slide here, this chart here just illustrates the summary of the twenty twenty-four revenue requirement into those four discrete sewer activities. Um, customer flow, biological oxygen demand and total suspended solids. As you can see, roughly two-thirds of the cost of the system are simply driven by the, the volume of flow going through the collection mains and at the treatment plant. So the findings in this chart, uh, are expressed in the cost recovery levels for the different user groups of this sewer utility. I'll summarize these here briefly and talk through some of the results we found. So, uh, you'll notice, one, there's a solid black line that runs across the chart. Um, and that represents what we would consider to be one hundred percent full cost recovery. Uh, there's also two dotted lines that run horizontally across the chart. Uh, when doing a cost of service analysis, we have to make assumptions on, on the characteristics of the system based on customer billing statistics. And so, um, in, in our practice, we generally interpret the results with a plus or minus ten percent margin. Or a range of reasonableness. What that means is as long as the cost recovery level for, for a particular class. Is within plus or minus ten percent of full cost recovery of one hundred percent. Then we would consider that class to be within, the rates to be within cost of service. So with a single-family residential, we found is generally their rates are pretty close to cost of service. Um, apartments are a little higher, the rates are a little higher than what it costs to provide service. Um, hotel and motel rates are significantly higher than the actual cost. Um, and with hotel motel rates being higher, there's got to be a class that's actually lower, and in this case it'd be the commercial and business class. Uh, we found that the cost of service far exceeds the revenue at, at existing levels. I'll talk to the, the, the reasoning behind that here in a bit. Um, and then finally, for the university, we found that their rates are pretty much on par with cost. The unique result for commercial, uh, customers is actually based on the rate structure that's currently in place. The vast majority of commercial customers pay a fixed charge of about forty, forty-six dollars per month. Now, there are, uh, some customers in the commercial group that, that pay a little more than that. They, they're assessed a flow charge. But the majority of commercial customers pay a fixed forty-six dollar per month charge for sewer services. Um, that forty-six dollars per month charge is about twenty-five percent more than the single-family residential bill. Residential bill for the city today is about thirty-seven dollars and change. Uh, so there's about a twenty-five percent cost, uh, rate premium for commercial customers. But businesses produce a lot more flow than a single-family customer. Based on the billing statistics we looked at, uh, businesses on average. Generate about five times more flow than a single-family customer. So while the rate's only twenty-five percent higher, the actual flow is about five hundred percent higher. And that's what we're seeing the difference in the resulting cost of service. Uh, for reference, I'm just showing the, the current rates as they stand today. I will point out, if you look at the second row from the, from the bottom here, for commercial school and industrial customers, there is a flow charge. Any customer who has a winter water average that exceeds thirty-five hundred cubic feet. Is charged about a dollar per hundred cubic feet above that thirty-five hundred cubic foot allowance. Um, that's important because we are proposing a rate structure change, um, um, in, in, in the, uh, in our findings. So the last step for the sewer utility, uh, rate study is developing the actual rates. Based on the overall revenue requirements of the utility and the cost of service results. As I mentioned, we can use those cost of service results to make, uh, class-specific rate adjustments. With the goal of improving rate equity between customer groups. We also use rate design to make sure that we're aligning our fixed and variable costs with the fixed and variable rates that we assess to customers. Um, and we also want to be cognizant of the impacts to customer bills. Um, last month, we had a chance to review these results with the Public Works Committee. And received feedback in terms of, uh, making sure that, uh, the rate adjustments, um, acknowledge and account for just the impacts to bills, uh, the customer bills of the next several years. Now, the specific rate strategies that we're looking at for this, uh, rate study. Is one, we want to make sure that the rates we assess will fully fund the revenue targets that we've established as part of the revenue requirement analysis. So we're going to bring in. Hopefully, the goal is to bring in seven and a half percent more revenue next year. Um, that's number one goal. We want to be able to fully fund the utility. The second goal, uh, is along with that overall seven and a half percent. Making those class-specific adjustments to improve cost equity between customers. One tool that we'll, we're proposing to use to get to that improved cost equity is to eliminate the current, um. Flow allowances in the rate structure for commercial customers. And replacing it with a flow charge that's based on, on total, uh, total water demand that's metered at, at each customer. And making that rate structure change as part of, part of, uh, uh, next year. So under the five-year rate strategy, if you look at the table here at the top of the slide. Uh, these are indicating the annual rate adjustments that would be made on a class-by-class basis. With the goal of generating seven and a half percent total rep, new revenue each year. Um, but also being responsive to the cost of service results. So in this example, um, the single-family residential rates would increase at a lower rate than average. So instead of going up by seven and a half percent, they go up about four and at four point four percent each year. Um, our apartment and mobile home rates would still increase, but well below the average rate at around two percent per year. Um, because of the difference we saw in the cost of service for motel hotel rates. We'd actually recommend holding those at existing levels, allowing the existing rates to kind of grow into the, their, their cost of service. Um, the most pronounced change you'll see is on the commercial side. Increasing commercial rates between twenty-five and seventy percent per year. Um, the goal with these percent increases is trying to, to produce a, uh, an increase to the annual flow charge. It's consistent year to year. So, so the percent increase isn't as important as the overall bill numbers I'll be showing in the next slide. And as a reminder, one of the, uh, options that we would recommend is eliminating the thirty-five hundred, uh, allowance. Uh, cubic foot allowance that's currently in place. And replacing it with a flow charge, uh, on all metered flow, uh, for commercial customers. And then finally, the university's rates would increase at about eight point five percent, slightly above the average rate. The graphs on the bottom of the slide show our cost recovery levels as they exist today before making any of these adjustments. And then we're projecting the cost recovery levels on the right, uh, graph on, to the right of the slide. Showing that with these annual rate adjustments, we can bring most classes within their cost of service within the next five years. Uh, these rate, uh, strategies are reflective of the scenario where we do not, uh, do the, the water reclamation facility. The, the custom rate adjustments by class are a little higher, um, for the scenario with reclamation facility, because we need to bring in just a little bit more revenue. Um, uh, on, on the aggregate. The same layout will be showing, uh, under the water reclamation facility scenario. Single-family rate revenues would have to go up about five and three-quarter percent each year. Which is still lower than the average overall need. Apartment and mobile home rates would increase by about three percent. We would still hold the motel and hotel rates at existing levels. And then the commercial rates would still increase at similar levels, um, to the previous scenario. And what does this mean in terms of bill impacts to customers? Um, this slide shows the, the projected rates by customer class over the next five years. Would be, we're, we're projecting about a dollar seventy increase to the monthly bill. For a single-family residential customer under this rate path for next year. And then each subsequent year increasing by about a dollar seventy to a two dollars each year. Um, I do want to point out just as a reminder that the flow charge for commercial customers. The current rate is ninety-six cents, but that only applies to a very small set of customers that exceed that allowance. Moving forward, the rate would apply to all metered flow for businesses. And would be about eighty-three cents per hundred cubic feet. And then increasing, uh, between seventy-five cents and a dollar per hundred cubic feet each year. Under this scenario with the water reclamation facility in the CIP, uh, what we'd be looking at is about a dollar, two dollars and ten cent increase next year to the residential bill. And then finally, I, what I want to spend just a little more time for wrapping up the sewer side. Is, um, the impact, uh, of this restructure to commercial businesses. Under the existing rate, um, I'm showing different, uh, you, uh, water, uh, demand levels for a customer here on the first column. Raging from five hundred cubic feet up to thirty-five hundred cubic feet. Under the existing rate structure, all these customers in these scenarios would pay the same, they pay the same monthly rate of forty-six dollars per month. Um, even though their, their flow is, is vastly different from one another. Under their proposed rate structure, all these cus, customers would pay a fixed charge as well as a flow-based charge. And so for a customer with five hundred cubic feet of, of flow in a month, their bill would increase from forty-six dollars per month to fifty-three dollars or fifty-four dollars per month. Whereas a customer that has, uh, monthly flows of, of thirty-five hundred cubic feet. Their bill would increase from forty-six dollars up to seventy-eight, that dollars next year. Uh, that's equivalent to an increase of about thirty-two dollars per month for that higher end. And about eight dollar increase for a customer with five hundred cubic feet of flow. So with that, I'll, I'll switch gears and, and talk through solid waste. Um, we'll go a little faster on solid waste because there's a lot of similar concepts that we looked at. So similar to the, to the sewer utility, we developed a forecast with some economic and, uh, labor cost assumptions built into the forecast. Very similar in terms of the assumptions we made for those inflationary cost pressures. In that the annual operating budget we forecast increased between three and four percent per year. Um, the CIP projects for, uh, solid waste are much lower than the sewer utility, and they focus primarily on replacing collection vehicles. Now, similar to the sewer utility, we do have a set of financial policies that we use as guardrails. To promote, um, sustainable and independent financial stability for the utility. Um, the operating reserve minimum target level is assumed at twenty-five percent of operating expenses, which is about four hundred thousand dollars. As a minimum target level. For the capital reserve element for the solid waste utility. The, the most expensive asset that's always totally maintains is its refuse collection truck fleet. Um, and so the reserve level we targeted is the replacement cost of one of those trucks in the event that there's a, uh, uh, a breakdown or catastrophic failure. Similar to the sewer utility, we are recommending that the rates begin to include some component of system reinvestment. Uh, for the recycling center and related, um, infrastructure. And with the goal of slowly transitioning to, uh, uh, to, to funding annual depreciation, uh, from here through twenty twenty-eight. So existing rate levels for this sewer utility are sufficient to meet our operating expenses both today and over the next five years. Uh, but the revenues at today's rates just are not sufficient. To keep our reserves above that minimum target. Uh, to fund our capital program and support the recommended system reinvestment plan. And so as a result, we are recommending. Um, that the solid waste rates increase in total by about eight percent each year over the next five years. Um, want to point out here that the, the solid waste bills for the sewer, for customers are one of the smaller bill components of, of utility bills, um, within Genie. And so an eight percent, um, that, that translates depending on the service, uh, between a, a dollar and two dollars. I'm sorry, a dollar to three dollars per month for typical residential services. Our cost of service analysis for solid wastes is, is actually based on a full, a cost accounting framework. That is outlined by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. As well as a framework provided by the American Public Works Association. And what it simply does is it breaks the costs. Of utility into activities like the sewer, um, cost of service. But we also break down those activity costs by different waste paths, be it garbage. Um, or yard waste or recycling services at the recycling center. And the pie chart here illustrates the revenue requirement itemized into those different functions or activities. And you can see that about half of our costs are tied to the actual collection of, of, of refuse and clean green material. Uh, our cost of service analysis results indicated that the residential garbage class. Their current rates are, are below the cost of service. Um, while our commercial garbage collection rates are actually above the cost of service. Uh, both clean green and commercial roll-off services are fairly close to, to being at, at, at full cost recovery. Uh, for reference, we included a, um. The, uh, outline of the existing rates for the different collection services. Residential garbage rates vary by can size. A twenty gallon mini can is about eight dollars per month today. The most common garbage can size is that sixty-four gallon garbage can. It's about twelve dollars per month. Um, customers can also subscribe to clean green collection service for about twelve dollars per month. For Dropbox service, it's based on the container size. And then for commercial refuse collection, it is based on container size and the frequency of collection on a weekly basis. So based on the cost of service analysis, we also developed custom-based class-specific rate increases for each of those classes. Uh, with the goal of bringing in the target overall revenue. And at the same time, um, transitioning our rates more to align with the actual cost of service. Um, based on that five-year transition plan. Residential garbage rates would increase between fifteen and twenty-one percent each year. Um, the reason those percentages change over the time is we're trying to keep the annual increase, the dollar increase. Between two and three dollars in each of the five years, uh, for that most common can size. Uh, clean green would increase at an, oh, the overall rate increase of about eight percent each year. Um, commercial garbage rates, because the existing rates are a little higher than cost. Um, the rates would still increase, but at a lower rate than the average, around two percent per year. And then our roll-off rates would also increase, but at a lower rate than the overall average, about six percent per year. Um, it's similar to the sewer side. You'll see on the bottom, there are two charts. The chart on the left shows our cost recovery levels by class as they exist today. And then the slide on the right shows the cost recovery levels, um, that we predict would occur in twenty-twenty-eight if to see where to follow this, um, this rate schedule. So what that means in terms of the actual bill impacts, um, a single family. Customer with the smallest mini can. Their bill would increase by a dot, by a dollar seventy-four next year. The most common can size, that sixty-four gallon can would increase by about two dollars and fifty cents next year. Uh, clean green, that subscription service for yard waste collection would increase by about a dollar. So just to wrap up the presentation. Um, it's my last slide. The, the goal of these utility rate studies is to establish, you know, a scheduled rate increases that, that, that do a lot of things. You know, but at the fundamental level, we want to make sure that these rates sustainably and independently fund each utility. Uh, the sewer and solid waste utility. Over not just next year, but over, over a longer term period, in this case, a five-year rate setting period. Um, these rate increases would fund all of the utilities operating in debt service obligations. They also begin to replenish those minimum financial reserves, bringing them back to the target levels, um, for each utility. The rate adjustments we're showing also begin to lay out a long-term funding plan. Uh, for the replacement of each utility's infrastructure. And, uh, the custom rate increases we're showing do improve cost equity between the different users of each utility. With the goal of, of achieving hundred percent cost recovery for most of the utilities' customer classes by the year twenty-twenty-eight. Um, and then the last piece we want to emphasize is. The custom rate adjustments we're proposing, we also kept in mind with feedback from the Public Works Committee. Make sure that these, these rates themselves are relatively stable, the increases themselves. And so there's. Uh, trying to keep the actual bill impacts in terms of dollars and pennies, uh, consistent year, year in and year out. Um, at a, at a high level. The combined impact of these rate increases for a residential monthly bill. Would be a combined five dollars and fourteen cent increase next year. Um, under the scenario that does not include the reclamation facility. And then five dollars and sixty-five cent per month increase next year. If the reclamation facility was included in the sewer capital improvement plan. Um, that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to fill any questions that you all may have. Um, and, and they'll also help facilitate any discussion that, that needs to happen.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate your time. I just had one comment. So. In the sewer utility cost of service phase in analysis with water reclamation facility assumes we fund that with debt. If we were to get grant money to fund that. Just wanted to make that clear that that's, that's the difference between.
That was the two scenarios because we really. Really don't know what's going to happen. I mean, uh, we're just. But if that debt was relieved. Then that's why we're presenting those two scenarios.
Okay, thanks. So just to repeat that, that would mean we would have debt with it still.
If, if, well, there's other funding opportunities for that. And. If, so the scenario that was the analysis and assumed that we, we did go into debt. We had. Right. Debt service paid for the rest of the water reclamation project. Correct. Yeah, that eight point seven five percent increase versus the seven and a half includes us going into debt to finish that water reclamation project.
Right. Yeah, that was.
There are other opportunities for us to fund that hopefully that we're, we're working on. So just want to make that. Any comments, questions for Matt or Todd? I'm sure you guys.
I can't. Your honor, I, this is Jill. I can't find the hand thing here. Um. Yeah, I was just wondering if we could get a copy of this, um, presentation.
Yes, we'll, we'll get that to you, Jill, for sure.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Any more things else? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, one quick question. We, it would have been nice to have the total. For sewer and solid waste for each year like we did before. Do we know what that is going to be? So you gave us a total for twenty-twenty-four of five dollars and sixty-five cents with the, with the project, five fourteen without it. Do we know what the increase will be all the way to twenty-twenty-eight with the total?
Yeah, let me, uh. Let me, uh, do that quick here.
Cause that's going to increase each year, correct?
Yeah. So, so if we compare the, the rate schedule today. For sewer, uh, we're looking about a, an overall nine dollar increase over the five-year horizon. To the monthly bill for sewer. And then in addition to that, we'd be looking at, um, scroll down, apologize for moving these slides quickly. Um, for the most common can size for, for garbage, uh, about a fifteen dollar increase. So in total, the twenty-four dollars, if a customer doesn't subscribe to yard waste collection. Twenty-five dollars, uh, yeah.
Over the course of.
Over the course of, or twenty, yeah, twenty-nine dollars over the course of the five-year period.
I, I guess I meant the summary for both. So the last page he did a summary with both. And yeah, for next year. Do you have? Those total summary numbers all the way through twenty-twenty-eight?
I can put them together and then, and then tonight and then get in, get the revised PowerPoint out to you all if that.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you. By the way, this is, this is really, really good. I loved your presentation and it really helps us see. Where we're at as a city and I think. Um, gives us something to look at for sure, because I think we do need money for the future and infrastructure for sure. So. Good job. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we, we talked about this pretty extensively in the Public Works, uh, committee. And, you know, there's good news and bad news with this. You know, the bad news, of course, rates got to go up. Nobody wants to pay higher rates. Uh, but the good news is. You know, from the ten thousand foot view is that our rates, even with these increases are much better than our neighbors. So that's, that's the, the one positive. You want to pay higher rates, go move to Spokane Valley or Airway Heights. So. Correct. And that's, so I had.
Anything else over here?
Yeah, I appreciate. Like Dan mentioned, we. Beat this up pretty good in the Public Works Committee meeting. And we did, I appreciate FCS responding where we've. Asked them to flatten out the, the curve where it was quite a peak to catch up and then leveled off again where. But truly, this is one of our primary responsibilities to the city council is to. Make sure our enterprise funds. Remain solvent and efficient and effective and. I think our solid waste rates have not been adjusted for some time, Todd. I, I, I don't know how long, but. I would like to do little bits each, each year rather than have large catch-up. But. I think what we need to do. Do we need to make a motion for you to bring back to us a resolution with some correction?
Well, I think, I, I think that as we follow the process, uh, last year, if there's, you're, you're given two scenarios, uh, for, for. Waste water, both with or without reclamation. But if you want us to bring back a, a resolution, a, a fee resolution based on one of those. Please, and if you're right, the resolution addressed five years.
What we did last year in January is that, okay, here's the five-year plan. Here's the five-year plan. And then after you put that resolution, we brought the next council meeting, the resolution showing what those rates would look like for this year. So then when we budgeted this year. Went back to that plan that you approved in January last year and looked at the next year, and that's be plugged into electric water. And I would assume. The same process would happen here.
If I mean there, uh. Like we were talking about on the, and I'm, I'm. Pleased that FCS brought to us a table with the. The rates with the water reclamation facility. And again. I think there's an opportunity, but we need to move fairly quickly in that. Our congressional delegation is open for us to submit a request. Somewhere in a neighborhood of eight million dollars. And it would get serious consideration for this next, uh, federal fiscal, uh, budget. In that. We've already funded the bulk of the reclamation project and, and. I would certainly ask, uh, if the mayor's office, if we could contact them and get that application process, uh, you know, my. Visit with one of our senators staff, they felt. It was a very good project and would compete very well. And that would, I think, save us. Uh, I don't know if it'll save us that from the total eight seventy-five back down to the seven fifty, but. I think the strength of this project being that it's well on its way and it's, and we only need the last twenty, twenty-five percent funded. Does compete well. So. With that, I would, uh, I would. I guess my suggestion is bring back on the. Wastewater, the one with the water reclamation facility amount. At the eight point seven five. If we do get. Funding and have to have less debt, we can adjust that back. And then, uh, be ready to go. I, I. I think the, uh, there's, we could talk all night about benefits of the water reclamation, but I think we need to. Be very serious about continuing. The progress to date and, and keep this project moving forward. Uh, and I would suggest that as far as a resolution to come back for this body and then. Again, the solid waste, I mean. We are the lowest in Spokane County, not to say that, that means anything other than we're very efficient. But we. And you saw the half shaded dots or no dots. I mean, we got to get going on this. So. Yeah, I would urge us to get. A resolution back to this council from that being as well.
I would need thoughts on that. Yeah, just, I would agree with Councilman Will Schmidt that I think we behooves us to get moving. I do have two other questions. Um, Todd, just. For the sake of us looking at it together, would it be good to have? A chart there that would show us what, what would it take us to finish the project if we had to? If we wanted to pay for it without debt service at all? Um, just to have something to look at there. What would the rate increase need to be? If we, I, it'd probably be significant, but then we wouldn't go out for a loan. I, I don't know, maybe just to look at that. And then second, I guess, would be. Once we're done with the water reclamation project, what will the benefits be to rate fees? If we could, I mean, I don't know, that's maybe a guess. I mean, that might be a complete guess, but. Do we have any idea of what, how it would affect rate, rates and would they go down?
Yeah, I, I know this is kind of a moving target. Right now, we have, uh, over eighteen million in grant funds that we are now into the project. We're into our final treatment facility being constructed and that's going to be constructed over, uh, this next year. We got two more tasks to, uh, accomplish on that. And that is, one is the storage in the pumping station, which will be the next task. Um, and then we have the distribution. So as we move forward to twenty-four, twenty-five and kind of into twenty-six. That's the opportunities that we have to, to try to get extra funding. Uh, but we do have that, that loan dollar will cover whatever we're short-falling. So. If we're able to get more funding from the federal side of it, it just buys down that debt reserve. And that debt reserve, I believe, I think the debt is. Thirty-year at one point two percent. So. Right now, we have, uh, when we originally applied for the reuse, uh, we had. Funding level, uh, on the loan itself at twenty-two point seven million. And moving forward, uh, we were able to capture eighteen million in between Department of Commerce and, uh, Bureau of Reclamation. Of, of just grant money. So I think that's, that's an indication of that last twenty-five percent, if we're able to get that. That's going to buy down that difference between seven and a half and eight point seven five. So we're just wheeling in that, that one point. Two-five of my math is correct, margin on that debt service.
So any other thoughts? Do we want to? Go ahead and we don't need to do a motion. I don't think, I think if everybody agrees that we come back with a resolution at eight point seven five, and then we can address the seven and a half whether. Adjust as needed. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Anybody? Okay with that?
I agree.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thanks.
We'll go ahead and send you that, that slide deck.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Todd. Let's move on. We have a public hearing. So I'm going to open a public hearing for the twenty-twenty-four budget. And for the governmental funds. And I think, are you going to go up first?
I think we're going to let, uh, courts go first since, uh, we're occupied too much of the judge's time.
Okay, Dave, come on up. Bring that up.
Good evening. I'm Dave Lucas. I'm your court administrator. And I'll be providing you the twenty-twenty-four budget presentation. And move to slideshow mode real quick. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. First, I'd like to start off with thanking the Public Safety Committee for their support and guidance as we were putting this together. And additionally, uh, the Finance Department and Cindy and her team helping with all the data. As the, all of you received the detailed packet, which provides all the breakdown for each of those. On this slide, we'll start off with our mission statement. And really three key. On this slide, we'll start off with our mission statement and really three key areas with that. Uh, providing professional, high standard operations, customer service, and being a good steward of public resources. We hope as we move forward, as a goal to really be value added to the community beyond just, uh, providing court details, but, and I'll hopefully present that as we move forward, uh, additional support. So what's changed? That's probably the, the biggest question. And I'll go through that here as we move forward. The budget, you'll see as you look at the detailed budget from year to year has been pretty consistent. And we've been pretty consistent in operations, and I'll show some of that as we move forward. So what's changed? First and foremost, me. So you've probably been most used to seeing Terry Cooper over the many years that she's been here. And so that's the initial change. The probation, that position is currently open and it is posted. And again, um, I think Carrie and, and her staff helping with that to get that out. And we are going through the process of hiring the community court staff, which we've got some really strong candidates for that, and that's being put forward. So as you can see there, we're a very lean staff. And so that has helped certainly with keeping some of the costs down, and we'll talk about that as we move forward. So this is the overall budget. And what you will see is that the graphic depiction mirrors the detailed budget that you have by category in the packets that were received. Certainly, the largest portion of that you can see is the salaries. And we're able to achieve some savings in that through some of the grant funding, which I'll talk about as we move forward. But the budget really hasn't grown, uh, substantially. And you will show where the offsets are as we move forward with other funding sources. This is the revenue slide, and you can see the difference there, uh, with the grant or the set of grants being the largest proportion of that. One of the smaller grants I presented last, uh, council meeting, and you approved to accept that. And many of the other revenue sources are projected because we don't know until those go through. Uh, and obviously being a public service for, that isn't our goal to necessarily. Those are just some of the outcomes of operations from doing things. As I mentioned, the grant is certainly the largest portion of the revenue that we see. And I'll break that down a little bit more detailed. So the therapeutic grant is the largest portion at almost 304,000, with the largest portion of that accounting for the personnel costs, which is also the largest of our budget. We're able to not only provide the full funding for the community court staff, which I think really provides a significant value added to the court program, but also the community. But we're also able to pay down some of the permanent staff through the overload process, which is able to recoup some of that cost from supporting that program by the full-time folks and offset some what would normally be a city cost from that. Uh, certainly the other, some of the largest benefits we've received from that is the equipment benefits, which are basically hard assets that come to the city. And we're able to use grant funds to provide that, some of which are the things we're using today with the audio visual resources. The, uh, in addition, we also receive the Office of Public Defense Grant, which we talked about, which helps pay down some of the costs for, uh, public defense services. And then as we look at some of the, just the general support items that we provide, those are support that we provide to the community and those that would potentially need resources that they might find other places that we're able to provide to help not only provide them in the initial support they need, but also a long-term support. So they are not necessarily, uh, held in the court system where they continue to come back in each time. So we're able to actually move them past that into a successful, uh, situation where they're able to be successful and move forward and really become, uh, full-fledged taxpayers in the system. So a graphic depiction really of the percentages that the grant pays. Uh, certainly the staff and overload is almost 50% of that, so 48% to be exact, followed by the resources of basic supplies and operations, which is 39%. And so that really are the four funding categories that came out of the grant. Uh, and it's also depicted in the presentation. And then I tried to offset a question that came out from public, uh, is the portion of the budget that the community grant offsets to what would have been the normal cost? And so hopefully this provides some depiction of that with the green being the base, uh, city costs, the red being the over portion that basically is able to substitute, and the orange being the portion that's provided completely by the grant that would be covered whether the city is providing a support to that or not. And then we wanted to highlight some of the accomplishments that we met over the last year. So as we mentioned, the therapeutic grant, which we've talked about extensively, the Officer of Public Defense Grant, which we talked about last city council meeting, uh, audio visual support, the cost savings, which we've been able to achieve through reducing transportation, which also significantly benefits the police department because we're able to not have to task an officer to do transport. And we've been able to do that through the extensive use of video conferencing, uh, using the resources we see here. And that's also been not only, uh, cost savings from officers, but also a cost savings with regard to, uh, the jail costs for defendants. Uh, have had extensive training, which will continue as we look at the new community court staff. And again, really hoping that that is an additional value added to the community because the additional resources we're able to provide, whether it's even today was an example, the food bank was closed, but we established a partnership with the food bank so that community members are able to come in and draw, uh, food baskets on days when they may be closed or hours that don't necessarily coincide with that effort. So in addition to having, uh, supporting court asset dates, we're able to support that on all the dates that were open. Uh, and then really, we've been able to purchase the text messaging system, which has also improved efficiency, reduced the number of failure to appear's warrants, arrests, and so forth. They really help reduce some of those costs through, uh, technology. One of the other questions that had come up was just kind of a depiction over the last four years of case filings, which have really been fairly consistent, hovering around the 2,500 cases. And then really, as we look forward to 2024, what are some of our goals? We want to strengthen our, uh, domestic violence advocacy program. We've relied very heavily on the Kalispel Tribe and the council that provides that support. Uh, we want to look at how we can revitalize, uh, youth court and really looking into May of 2024, the Law Day Program, and how we can open up and reach out to the schools. And really looking at what are other local partnerships? We've already established a partnership with E W U, uh, but looking at what other opportunities are available to again be value added to the community beyond, uh, the regular court aspects. Uh, what we will see in 2024 should provide significant efficiencies gains is the court management system and transitioning from a very dated, uh, court, you know, judicial information system to a more integrated, uh, apps-based system that will allow us to bring documents in and out. The O Court system, which was something we were able to purchase through the grants, uh, to be much more efficient and reduce some of the, uh, duplicate efforts with regard to reporting. Uh, and finally, looking as we go with growing the community court program, uh, really how we can help the community as a, as a broader piece and providing extensive training to that staff. I did take a few minutes to try to think through some of the questions that might help inform you as we move forward and the public about any questions, particularly some of the concerns, long-term concerns that might appear. One of which certainly is the grants. You know, as you saw, that is a large portion of the budget and provides a significant offset. So how does that affect us, um, if we were to, uh, first, how much of that is paid for? And I think I've mentioned that how the therapeutic court grant helps us reduce overall costs because there's many opportunities that we're able to use grant funding, uh, to offset costs that we might otherwise be, particularly as we talk about some of the fixed costs. And then supplement the public defense salary, which is helpful and helps attract quality public defense attorneys to support our clients. Uh, you know, then what happens if the grants aren't renewed or we were to lose the grants? So the public defense grant has been going since 2018. And discussions with the legislative staff and the AOC, it looks like that that will continue and will be a priority as they move into the next legislative session. We won't really know until that can starts. It won't really start until January. And then the therapeutic grant, this is on the second year of that, but it's become very popular. And across the state, there's significant effort to actually add that to the appropriated budget so that we will no longer have a, uh, basically where we basically, uh, put in a request to get paid back for our expenses. Or last year where they uploaded, then we had to pay the city back, or I'm sorry, the state back for those costs. So this would actually be an appropriated piece. Some of that goes back to the manpower concerns because some of the larger, uh, jurisdictions have had a challenge with their hiring process because it is a grant-funded position and how they can build consistency in that. So there is strong effort between AOC and it looks like, uh, the Judicial Legislative Committee to build that into the appropriated budget. So we believe that it will continue. Um, we will not know that definitively how that will look until the legislative session continues. And then really open it up to, to you or anybody else in the audience that might have any questions for me.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave on the court budget? Did the judge, did, did you want to say something, Judge? Thanks, Dave. Welcome, Judge.
Mayor and council and staff and management and others. Uh, Dave is the numbers guy. I'm the kind of the guy that drives the fire truck. And so, um, I come out, uh, two days a week. Uh, our proceedings are, are right here, and you're sure welcome, uh, to come. Uh, this has been a, uh, very much of a transition year, and it does involve, like, in finance, and I'll try to keep it to, to that. But, uh, Dave Lucas is our new court administrator. I know that some of you have met him, some of you have not. Uh, Dave, uh, comes with absolutely, uh, amazing credentials. He's a lieutenant colonel, he's, uh, in the military for, I don't know, 20, 22 years, and, uh, he is, uh, top-notch. Uh, been a very much of a blessing for the court, for me and others. Uh, we do want to thank, uh, and put on the record, uh, Terry Cooper and how she's doing. If you saw the paper this morning, she's on the front page of the paper. If you haven't seen the paper, go ahead and take a look at it. And, uh, she has been amazing. But the transition to Dave, uh, was, uh, very much of a concern, but, um, it is, uh, it is going very well. We want to thank, uh, Mark and Carrie and Cindy for all the assistance that they have, uh, brought. Um, a different flavor. Uh, is it good or bad? I don't know, but it's, uh, you know, certainly, uh, different. Um, one of the things that, that I did last year, and I think it is a little bit helpful, hopefully it's a helpful. What are the things that concern me most? Uh, I'm kind of sitting back and I'm flying at 10,000 feet. Again, he's, uh, doing the numbers. He's, he's managing, uh, this, um, this operation. You know, I have, um, responsibilities, um, over that, but I, I rely on good people, uh, and like what you do. Uh, the transition has been, uh, something that has worried me a lot. You know, how do we bring someone in and have someone that is, uh, qualified? And of the statute of, uh, Dave, uh, Lucas, we found our, our person. We found our person. Uh, we just have to make sure that, uh, Dave doesn't burn out and that Dave stays. So, uh, we, uh, if you could encourage him to do so, that would be great. Staffing, we run a very small outfit, very small. I mention this every year. We have three full-time people. We're, uh, building it up. We have this, uh, community court, uh, but if one person, um, um, is, uh, not here, uh, we have, uh, certain challenges. You know, during COVID, we had some, uh, significant challenges. But there again, we have, uh, some partners that we can rely on. Technology, you know, a lot of this, what you're seeing, um, is accredited to Terry and, uh, Dave. Uh, we're having a transition with regard to state and information systems and all of those things. You've probably heard, uh, some war stories, uh, from the community colleges and others. Hopefully it's not going to, um, hit the court system. There are some pilot projects out there that are, are running, and I think that they're doing a good job, but it, uh, does concern me. We're all about information and accurate information. And, uh, the police chief, um, is in that same, uh, uh, situation. The community court, great. It is a fantastic program, fantastic program. Uh, we need numbers, we need, um, you know, good people though to, uh, run the court. Um, you know, Carrie and Dave have been interviewing people. Uh, I think we sent out a, a letter today. We have just a, a great candidate to, to head that. One of the concerns that I have is the ongoing funding. I, I think there's enough momentum out in, uh, the states to continue that, but it, it's always a concern. What happens if the state, uh, does a downturn? Is that going to be one of those, um, uh, things that will be, uh, cut? Uh, case numbers, uh, not much we can do with. We, uh, we process cases that are provided to us. Uh, we are not a, uh, real popular part of, uh, this, um, uh, budget because, uh, we, we burn up money and more than what we bring in. But our job is in the judicial branch, and we're not really supposed to look at money when we're involving ourselves with any, uh, specific case. Uh, one of the, uh, big issues that, uh, concerned me, um, and, uh, you know, we've been very fortunate. And I, you know, compliment, uh, the staff and the mayor, uh, put together a good prosecutor and a good public defender. And, uh, the court doesn't hire those, that would be absolute conflict of interest. But, uh, you can create a lot of problems with the wrong, uh, prosecutor, with the wrong public defender. We have, um, been, um, um, you know, we've had some, some very good ones. We're in the process of, or the, the mayor's in the process. I, I think of, uh, a hiring, uh, a good, uh, public defender, and, uh, we're very supportive of that. Uh, jail costs, this is one of those, uh, things that, um, um, you know, I'm not supposed to, to look at, uh, uh, jail and jail costs when I'm, I'm making a decision. But I've, I've seen some projections where individual, um, nights at jail are upwards, um, or will be $170 a night. And, uh, but that comes with a meal and everything. It's a, it's a significant amount. It's a significant amount. We have, uh, been, um, using the, the Zoom technology very well. And, um, I don't think we've had any transport, uh, here. Um, we've been, uh, very fortunate. Um, what we do is we have a court twice a, a month. And then, um, on Fridays, uh, generally, we're able to, um, Zoom me and, uh, the district court, that's where I spend most of my time. And we're able to, uh, uh, piece together, uh, the different, um, necessary parties and all of that. And it's worked out great. It's worked out tremendous. Um, I think that's probably the lasting or the overlasting and benefit of COVID. It forced us to, to do this electronic, uh, um, like what, what we were doing, uh, tonight. And it's, it's been great. So those are the things that concern me, the transition, the staffing, the technology, community court, case numbers and so on. But, um, I'm real proud of what we're doing. And, uh, if you, uh, have any questions or concerns, come and, um, you know, talk to, to me, um, introduce yourself, uh, to, uh, to Dave Lucas. Um, again, I'm very proud of what we do. Uh, the chief is doing a, a great job with, with his department. We are 24/7 too. We're 24/7 like, uh, uh, there's a, a partnership with the, uh, district court. Um, we're paying money for the district court, to the district court, but there's a judge on call at all times. And so, uh, we can take, uh, uh, search warrants or, or whatever. So that's kind of the, the, my thought is kind of an overview. Uh, uh, got a little, uh, ways away from the budget, but it all kind of ties into, uh, to money. Any questions? Any questions?
Thanks, Judge. Any questions for the judge?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just comment.
Thank you, Judge Leon, for being here tonight. I, if you, if we behave yourself, we get to see you once a year.
Right.
And Ms. Lucas did a great job on the, uh, budget presentation. I don't have a question per se. I, I, you know, again, our Chinatown Municipal Court is a pretty rich history where we went from lay judges to commissioners and now, you know, real judge. But to note, and, uh, it's our responsibility, and we only have, uh, uh, once in every four-year window to do an analysis of our municipal court before we, we have a, a judge election. And I know that'll probably trend, is that for 24 or 25 hour? We're going to look into that. It's our responsibility to make sure that we're doing our court services in the most efficient, effective, uh, manner possible. And it is refreshing to see, and I, I really appreciate, and we've had to, to get really creative to keep our costs down and to have no transport. I mean, that was an ongoing cause for many years when we, no, you lose a police officer as a taxi. Yeah. So that's good to see, and I'm, I'm really glad to see the, the youth program coming back and the therapeutic. work accomplishments. I think that's very commendable. Yeah, I don't know what the state's going to do, but public defenders are, that's a tough one. It's just money. And, but again, I appreciate your effort and work and see what things look like when we get into this analysis.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's one of those issues that, that the, the council is going to have to address. And it's, it's like what we heard with the sewer and the water and all of those, those kind of things. Do you consolidate regionally? Do you continue to maintain a independent court? I, I think you're going to have to sit down and, you know, kind of figure out and have a very sharp pencil on that. And, you know, I can certainly assist you with that a little bit. I've got, you know, opinions, but it's all about, you know, I wrote down on my, my paper here, you know, the, the biggest issue we've got is community safety. It's community safety. That's my job. You know, we have a lot of these other things. We've got community court and we got, you know, youth court, which is, he's going to be dynamic in that. But it comes down to how do we keep a community safe? How do we partner with the, with the chief there? And you can't cut corners there, you know, we are, we, and I, I mean us all. We're, we're in this together and how do we provide the best services? And, but how do we keep people safe and how do we keep these people accountable? You know, it's one of the things that, one of the beauties of this community court is that we are addressing the underlying needs and the housing and the, you know, the jobs and all of those kinds of things. We, we go beside them and we want them to be successful and we, I think we do a, a good job. It's, it's expensive, but it's expensive to house these people. It's expensive to have victims of their, of their crimes too. So, but yeah, you know, it's, it's one of those, those things that it, it'll be an interesting discussion. And, yeah.
I guess I just, if you have the detailed packet, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out and we can, questions in, in the chat. Good to meet you, Mike. I hope that gave a good run.
Yep.
Your predictions are rapid. Specific detailed question, please just read back to our best answer.
Thanks, Dave.
Proud, yeah. He's out here every day. He's doing the work. He is going, yeah, you know, one of the things that Dave didn't tell you, very much into volunteer work prior to him coming into this, he's very networked, not only in this community, but throughout the Spokane community. We're excited about the university, you know, bringing in interns to, you know, developing new leaders. And all of those things, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it up before we move on to the next, next department budget. But does anybody have any questions for Mr. Lucas or the judge on our court 2024 budget?
Sure. Jill wants to speak or not?
No. Jill, did you have anything?
I have nothing. Thank you very much. Thank you both for, for sharing what you did. Very much appreciated.
About the public, anybody on Zoom and the crowd here? Okay. Thank you, Dave. Appreciate your time. And who's up next? Mark? We'll move on to the admin budget. Probably take a break here pretty soon here.
Okay, so admin budget really doesn't change much year after year. So we'll, we'll go over sort of the financial piece at the end, but there, there's some things that I, I certainly want to talk about. Because I don't know that we do enough to sort of celebrate our successes, you know, and the positive things that we've done. So I want to talk about a couple of things in particular, early on in the presentation. In terms of the work we do on public records and the work we've done in code enforcement. I just want to give you some numbers and show the, the amount of activity that kind of goes on in the city. But I'm not going to, you can read this at your leisure. This doesn't change. You know, our, our goals just provide leadership and direction and management for all, all the city functions. Just making sure our operations are consistent with our local ordinances and the state and, you know, any better laws that are out there. Again, just to provide oversight. This is what comprises the administrative budget. We've got our, our administrative office, we've got legislative, which is your budget. Public defender prosecutor legal, which is our contract city attorney, Mr. Caban. Code enforcement wellness library, left one, city communications and our records management slash public records. So accomplishments, maintaining our well city status is, is crucial for us. You've heard from me several times that we do receive a 2% discount on our medical premiums. City and the employees, if we maintain our well city status. And I have to publicly thank Carrie in particular, who leads our wellness committee, as well as the other members of the committee. We have Chief Jenkins that serves on the committee, Kathy Munoz, Lucky Fitzner, Dan Curly. Who am I forgetting? Ethan from our Parks and Rec Department. They put a lot of the programs together that we need to do to achieve that well city award. We've had a couple of good, good programs this year. We had a chili cook off that was very popular. I will say that's probably gotten the most, the most participation of any program that we've done. Every single department was represented. That might be a first for a wellness activity that we've done. So city's doing a great job with that. We hired Verlin Conrad to come in and be our code enforcement officer. She replaces Rick Campbell, who'd served in that capacity for the last year and a half or so. Rick is still providing some expertise and guidance to Verlin as she, as she trains. But that moves us into just some activities and some stats. So comparing 2022 to 2023, code violations identified in 2022, 355, 2023, 547. Inspections done, 2022, 605, 2023, 706. The good news about this slide is we get compliance about 99.8% of the time. And oftentimes, you know, it's a quick letter. Hey, your grass is out of control. Homeowner takes care of it right away. There's others. We certainly have to put a little more in, a little more input in on return visits. Second letters, even taking into the brink of citation. We have had to work through those. But, you know, our staff has been pretty diligent about, you know, making sure there's follow up and, and these issues around town get taken care of. Want to talk real quickly just about the types of violations that, that we addressed. And this is so far just in, in 2023. Overwhelming majority is just vegetation and that's just overgrown grass and weeds. There's nuisance. It's a little bit of catchall that, a lot of that is household goods. You know, in your front lawn, in your driveway, on your property somewhere, which is against the, the ordinance. There's a couple of just dead tree issues there. And then the other component of that is junk vehicles, which several of those have been identified and, you know, whether those be parked on the street or, you know, on somebody's property. And so we've worked hard to try to, try to address those as well, along with our partners at the police department. Other issues, just right away, that was, that's really just private trees out in our, our city right away. Getting into alleys and those sorts of things. The other health and sanitation, that's mainly just trash and sort of rubbish on properties that needs to be cleaned up. And then the, the final one, which is a fairly small percent as well, and that's building. And that's mainly comprised of working without a permit or an expired permit. And that's discovered through a variety of means. So that's just a little summary of, of what code enforcement did over the course of 2023. Moving on to some more accomplishments. Our legislative work, just transitioning from the sixth to the ninth district and engaging with our new legislators while continuing our relationship with our old sixth district. Mayor and I spent some time obviously with, with our new legislators and with the help of Deborah, setting up meetings and things for us, you know, just trying to educate them on, on Chinny's needs and the issues that we're facing. Mayor Grover continued to serve on the STA board, participated in the regional homeless coalition. Is going to be our appointee for the opioid abatement council. And then, I don't know if he willingly did this exactly or not, but has become the newest member of the Spokane Clean Air Board. I think his arm was maybe twisted by a fellow mayor and he agreed to, to go ahead and do that. Myself, served on the N W P P A Board of Trustees, the WCIA Risk Management Committee. Also participate in the West Plains Safety Alliance. And kind of the same situation with the mayor. I agreed to sort of go on to the reformed scraps advisory board that used to meet. I was a member years ago and it, it kind of, I just disappeared for a variety of reasons. And with some of the issues that scraps has been facing over the last year or so, they, they decided to bring it back. And, and since I had some experience there, I agreed to, to go back on. And then I also participated in the, the regions, regional homelessness coalition, which we, we've made some great strides. It's been painful to kind of get the progress to where we are now. Just in terms of setting up a, a regional entity to deal with the homelessness problem. There was a lot of conversations with a lot of stakeholders. But I, I think we're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel finally. We, we've got some, I, I think some consensus agreement on a governance structure, you know, kind of a board makeup. So I, I'm really looking forward to kind of putting the finishing touches on this so we can bring it back to you for consideration as to whether or not the city chain is going to participate in this thing. But this truly is a, is a regional effort. If you want more information, you know, just about documents, if you want to watch, you know, some of the, the past meetings, you can go to Spokaneunite.org. There's Zoom recordings of the meetings and there's other documents that they prepared and statistics and things. Now I want to talk a little bit about public records. So public records are important. We, we truly believe in the transparency of government. And I got to tell you, this is something that, that I, I take some pride in. We need to celebrate our successes here. And you'll see it in a few minutes, but just the time to respond to public records requests. Chinny fares very well when compared to, to other cities, our size and, and bigger. But in 2022, we had total requests received and closed of 464. We spent about 696 hours on public records requests and that's between Kathy and then, you know, the rest of the city employees. And that is a, a probably low ball estimate. We ask people to just kind of give us an estimate each time they perform a request. So it's probably underestimated. The cost of the fulfilling requests that we reported to, to J L R C was 64,233. And then again, that's kind of a, a just a estimate on the time spent based on the employee's wage and then the other costs associated with filling the request. Looking at 2023, we pulled the numbers through the end of October. We are at 421 received. We've closed 419 of them. So that's, there's a couple that are still in process. Hour spent on the records request, 1,011. It's a lot of hours, a lot of hours. And the cost of fulfilling the request as we estimate so far is about 73,477. I'll say the big jump is the implementation of the police body cams. You know, obviously with, with those being out there. Before we can release that footage, you know, we've got to go through that stuff and redact, you know, certain pieces of information. And thank you to council for, for approving the, of the request to buy the software that helps us do that. It's a very efficient way to, to go through the video and it, the, the system's smart enough to, you know, blank out faces and, you know, license plates and that sort of thing. And so it saves a tremendous amount of time. And it also, while it's doing that, kind of do some automatic sites to exemptions, you know, that back from records. This is the numbers that I, I wanted to show you. So these are, this is 2022. And in the state, if you, if you get over a hundred thousand dollars worth of sort of public records related things, you, you have to report it to this J L R C, which is the Joint Legislative, I wrote it down, Audit and Review Committee. And so they're the ones that kind of look over and just, you know, you know, kind of monitor, you know, what, what public records are doing in the state. But if you look and see our 2022 numbers, city Chinny, final days to final disposition. So when it's received to, to when it's filled, 1.7. That's, that's phenomenal. That's really phenomenal. Granted, most of our requests that come in are simple, you know, like they want an accident report, you know, from a, you know, car collision or something like that. Or they want other documents like, you know, councilments or something like that. Those are easy to fill. The ones that take a lot of time are of course the, the police body cam stuff. But then there's been a few requests that are, you know, any and all. We want all this stuff, you know, we want all me emails from here to here. And, you know, obviously that takes a lot of time for us to go through and for us to keep that, that number low just shows the, the hard work that's done by, by Kathy Munoz in particular, and then, you know, all the other staff members that are required to search through, you know, their electronic records, their paper records, you know, their voicemails, their text messages, you know, all those things. And, and I really commend the staff for making this a priority when a, when a request comes in. But you, if you, if you look at some of the other entities, you can see that, that we, we fare very, very well. The average and, and the median days. So the estimated cost of managing and retaining records, this is 2022. And this is again, the, the numbers that we reported to J L R C. Staff costs of about 110, 690, our system costs, that's everything else that goes in from, you know, the software that we use to, you know, you know, just everything that needs, it's a cost to produce a record. So total estimate, estimated cost 310,000, you know, across, across the city. Some other accomplishments. Pretty proud of the effort that, that the city made working with A W C and, and others on solutions to the housing and zoning, zoning issues during the last legislative session. We had Brett Lucas serve as, on a work group as they, they worked through, you know, some of the pieces of legislation that were out there. And Brett did a wonderful job representing the, the city of Chinny and, and really, you know, highlighting the issues of, you know, potential changes to zoning and, and sort of wrestling the authority of our, our local, our local legislative bodies away. And just protecting sort of the integrity of, you know, the different neighborhoods in our, our community. We're in the middle of negotiating a couple of new labor contracts, which we hope to wrap up here fairly soon. The wellness events I talked about before. You got to hear from, from Dave tonight. I, I think that was a success for us. We recruited, recruited Dave and Dave's done a, a great job hitting the ground running, really connecting with, with Cindy. And I, and I appreciate her efforts to kind of get him up to speed on our internal processes. And Dave's done a really nice job, you know, making life easier on the finance department by getting things in on a timely basis and making sure they're correct and working hand in hand with Cindy on the, you know, grant reporting, you know, all the financials and those sort of things. So that's a, that's a success for us. We joined the statewide opioid settlement to address issues relating to the opioid epidemic. Again, talked about the regional homelessness coalition, continuing to work on the land quantity analysis and 50 acre park study. Some great informations coming out of, of both of those studies that, that were being performed by consultant. And then most importantly, the pool bond passed. Thank you. Thank you citizens for supporting this, this great endeavor that we're, we're sort of launching on right now. I was telling Councilmember Schmidt earlier today that we, we had a meeting, we, we do a weekly meeting with, with NAC. And they're really starting to firm up sort of the design and the concepts and it looked awesome. I, I can just tell you, I was so, I was jazzed after seeing some of the schematics and, and some of the concepts that they were proposing for the pool. I think concepts that they were proposing for the pool. I think the community is going to really be pleased with the end result. To get it out there. Goals, mentioned this earlier, continue to work on the water conservation and and water reese program. Key here is trying to secure that that full funding. If we can go out there and get a a federal sort of earmark to finish off of that project, that's great. We certainly don't want to you know, burden our ratepayers, you know, with with trying to fund this project through through debt. Want to continue to work on economic development for Cheney Industrial Park. Some may know that we're losing Allpack. They they've decided to shut down their operations by, it sounds like by the end of the year. So now that we have potentially a vacant structure out there, you know, maybe that's an opportunity to to recruit another business to come into Cheney. So I think that's something we haven't had, you know, when site collectors come out and are looking for new properties, a lot of times they're looking for a building, you know, which we haven't had. So, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, once they we we make contact with with the Allpack folks and get a little better idea of what their plans are that we can work to, you know, maybe promote that property. Good thing I I put on this presentation every year is continue to provide quality legal services to the city departments and officials. Thank goodness we have this man sitting to my left. Mike Pons has done a fabulous job. You know, any any legal questions, concerns we've had, he's done, he's been very responsive, he's been very thorough in his research. So we're we're very lucky to have Mike on board. Next goals, we have three new council members. So one of our, you know, early two thousand twenty-four goals would be to onboard them. You know, get them up to speed on on the budget, you know, on city operations. Give them the opportunity to learn so they can contribute to, you know, to the city. Talked about records management and public records responsiveness. We're going to continue to do our code enforcement activities throughout the city. We're trying to be more proactive. Bearland gets out and drives around and, you know, identifies issues and and tries to get on them right away. We certainly want to maintain our well-city status. There's certain, you know, goals that we have to achieve and they seem to get a little bit harder every year in terms of, you know, sort of reporting and tracking and and those sorts of things. So Kerry's done a good job sort of staying on top of that and and our wellness committee, you know, coming up with plans to to make sure that we meet all those goals. Legislative agenda advocacy, focused on the infrastructure funding. Continue to the the discussion on zoning and housing. And 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 Councilmember Schmidt said this, I think it was at the last last council meeting. We're going to ask the legislature to do no more harm to municipalities. That's kind of a common thing from all of us cities. You know, they sometimes the state doesn't always keep in mind some of the impacts their decisions might have on on local entities. So we want to try to remind them of that and and the support we need from them. We want to continue to work closely with Eastern, you know, with their leadership on strategic initiatives. You know, I, the success between the city of Cheney and and Eastern is a shared one. I think the more that we can do to plan and work together, the better off we we all are. Excited about the downtown revisioning project. You'll you'll see that later to the start of that later tonight with resolution F two oh seven, I think it is. We wouldn't really want to took it, take a look at downtown. There's some opportunities, I think, if we were to, I'll just say beautify the area, create a nice open space for our community members to come congregate and support our local businesses. That benefits everybody. Our our resolution tonight is going to be looking to, you know, work with a a design firm to kind of scope out what a project might look like and some features and things. I I really think this is 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 a start of something big, sort of renew our downtown. I mean, I think there's some other opportunities out there. We've talked about some ideas for, you know, art and and some other things, just to really kind of liven up that old historic district downtown. Last bullet point on here, updating our emergency response plan. I think if the gray fire taught us anything, it taught us that you know, there's some things that maybe we hadn't thought about and especially when it comes to, you know, sort of traffic and evacuating and and logistics and things. I mean, things that were outside of our control, you know, when when the state shuts down I ninety. Well, where's the traffic going to go? It's going to come through Cheney. Well, that has, that has implications for us. And Chief Bechtel and his crew, how many hours did you spend out there at at various intersections directing traffic? And yeah, it was a lot. It was a lot. So what I'd like to do is is really work with our two chiefs, our county department emergency management and Easter, you know, to come up with, you know, a very solid plan to plan for contingencies that are out there and, you know, for us internally to make sure that we could continue business operations should, you know, some sort of emergency hit our town. Other goals, public power advocacy, you know, just sitting on the Northwest Public Power. You know, there's, there's a lot of changes coming with with some of the CETA stuff and, you know, some other, you know, decisions that are going to be made on on sort of power generating assets that are out there. We want to make sure that we we advocate for public power. And really, that's on behalf of, you know, our ratepayers, you know, to try to make sure that we can maintain some affordable rates. So public power really does a good job working together, you know, all of the different you know, cities and other co-ops and entities, the power providers are out there, really meet quite frequently and and talk about issues and and really try to plan for for the future. We still are going to be working on recruitments for key positions and succession planning for the following year. We have a number of retirements coming up in the next year and a half to two years. We've already started working on some plans in in our finance department. We're going to be taking a hard look at Public Works as well, as some of those are the the key retirements that we have. Going to continue our work with the other West Plain cities on initiatives for collaboration. I think we we've done a great job working with the city of Airway Heights on on some initiatives that we can work together on. We've supported them. They've they've supported us in different ways. And I think there's more opportunities, opportunities to do that in the future. Obviously, finishing the design and and beginning the construction on the new Cheney Aquatics Facility is is job number one for us for two thousand twenty-four and make sure that we deliver on, you know, our our sort of promise to the community to have this thing open by June of two thousand twenty-five. Just a quick org chart. This doesn't change other than a couple of names have changed. Obviously, it's Bearland taken over as our code enforcement officer and Dave on report administrator. And then budget wise, like I said, this doesn't change a tremendous amount over the the last several years. You know, biggest chunk, year after year is typically administrative salaries and benefits. The big sort of light blue chunk this year, the that's our admin maintenance, operating and economic development contingency fund. A large chunk of that is is contingency, contingency fund. Sorry, I'm starting to lose my voice. So that of that contingency fund, it's it's about twenty-one thousand two hundred in in levy lid left sort of contingency. We've got a mayor's contingency fund of about three hundred and fifty. And and really that that three fifty, you know, that's that's at the, you know, mayor's discretion to sort of use during, I'll say, emergency kind of situations. We have something unexpected happen, you know, we need to be ready to move or if there's a, if there's a project, you know, that we've identified that that we need to address. You know, that that's a fund that we can certainly certainly pull from as well. And then we have an additional fifty thousand in dollars, fifty thousand in there for I'll say emergency overtime. So something like the gray fire, when we had additional overtime for our police to be out and, you know, sort of directed traffic and things, we we like to have that that chunk of money there as well. Other things, we, you know, we, every year we fund a thousand dollars for our our wellness initiative. And that's that's basically required as is one of the goals is to, you know, sort of adequately provide at least a minimum amount of funding for wellness, a wellness program. The library, that's thirty-eight six. We we had budgeted some money for this year to do a a project, collaborative project with them on replacing the door, the main door to the library, but they were not ready to pull the trigger yet. So we're going to just move that into next year. A couple of other little things that we're going to work with them on, just building enhancement wise. Code enforcement, we spend about twenty-eight-two, a lot of that is is salary for for Verland, but there's some other incidental costs, you know, gas for the the vehicle, some supplies and things. Public records, hundred and seventy-six thousand. Again, a lot of that is salary. Software, just supplies. Our legal prosecutor and public defender, two thirty. Again, that doesn't change a lot. We do have, you know, the judge's salary is set by the county, so that does tend to increase each year. And let's see, think, and the other one I will call to your attention is the left one. That that fund is actually seemed to decrease over the last several years and a lot of us just do the the shrinking number of left one retirees that are still in that fund. You know, as as unfortunately, those people pass on, they are getting older. So we we need this sort of less funding in that particular area. And that was really it. So I will be happy to answer your questions. You have all the detail in front of you as far as the nitty gritty of our budget. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Questions for Mark on admin? How about the public? Since this is a public hearing, any questions for councilor Mark on admin? Corinna, I see your hand up. Is that?
Yes, um, I was curious about code enforcement. I'm wondering if any of the data, if you specifically looked at if there's a difference between or any patterns in code violations from resident homeowners or from out of town landlords.
We haven't really dug into that detail, but that's that's actually something that that we might be able to dig into a little bit. That's a, it's a good suggestion.
Yeah. And then I guess the other question, we've been talking about like water and the water reclamation project. And just seeing that like almost four hundred cases of code enforcement around vegetation. I'm wondering if there can be more of a coordinated effort to to think about vegetation and code enforcement and water use in a more holistic way. I think often we really prize those neatly manicured green lawns, but of course those take a ton of water and we have not had any kind of limits on water usage. Even given water shortages in recent years. Whereas lawns that have more native vegetation may be perceived by neighbors or by code enforcement as violations. And so just thinking about equipping code enforcement staff to actually have some knowledge in that area and then just also thinking, is it really in our best interest as a city to be pushing everyone to overwater their lawns or to make sure that, you know, lawns are fitting into that kind of really narrow box of what should be and recognizing kind of the pros and cons of different approaches. Obviously, there's, you know, a fire danger in summer. But is this really about, you know, health and well-being or can we, you know, can we think about water usage? Yeah, and also, you know, like, you know, different neighbors have different standards. And so I think a lot of the reports come from folks who are displeased that their neighbors yard is not the same standard of their own. And I'm not sure that's really a a city issue.
Well, I can tell you that we've had a lot of discussions over the years about, you know, watering, water conservation and and, you know, offering some, you know, different maybe incentives to you do things like zero scape or or things that would limit people's need to to water so much. And I think Councilmember Bartels has quite brought this up quite frequently about, you know, setting aside some funding to try to further that that goal to to reduce the amount of water. When it comes to, you know, just enforcing, you know, the the code that's out there. I mean, I I I think our our code enforcement staff over the last couple of years have done a good job. You know, knowing when something is maybe natural vegetation and is is at least taken care of versus weeds that are out of control. And and that's what we try to focus on.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. I think I'm thinking of one particular personal experience where I was standing in front of a blooming lavender plant, trying to convince the city staff member that it was not in fact, a weed, but perhaps that was, that was an anomaly. So I'm glad there's conversations about zero scape. That's what I'm encouraging to hear.
Yeah, no, it's 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 a good point you bring up and and certainly we want to be good stewards of a of a resource and, you know, if there's things that we can do to to encourage others to to consider, you know, alternate to grass and things. I I I think that's a good, a good conversation to have. I can, I can tell you that when we're looking at the, you know, the new aquatics facility design, we're trying to work in, you know, I I would say you know, zero scape and some other other, you know, other, you know, plants and and trees and things that don't need a lot of water. I mean, that that's kind of our goal to be be sort of sustainable from the city property perspective.
Anything else for admin? Did you want to roll right into Parks and Rec?
I think people need a break from me. Only let why don't we let Cindy go and then I'll come back.
Okay, let's do that. Cindy. Finance.
We have one lady here for
Jackie, was there something specific about Parks and Rec? Or did you want to hear the presentation first? Are you sure? Okay, okay.
Hello, all. I'm not nearly as exciting. You know, our finance, we don't change a whole lot from year to year. We offer the same services. Do our best to improve on them every single year, try to think of new ways in which we can support and give information to our citizens and our ratepayers. That's pretty much what we do. So as we can get started, let me see, whoops, too far up there. There we are. We supervise a lot of different things in finance, you know, not only our finance budget, but all these other areas as well. I manage the jail bill, lodging tax committee, of which Council Vice Manager is the chair. We now have a debt service fund again for our general obligation bond. We have a regular capital facilities fund and now we have a capital projects fund for our pool construction. So those will be new to us this year. And we do have an unemployment fund in the midst that's needed. And of course, we have a The total of all those, including ending fund balances, is a little over twelve million dollars, as you can see. I know that's hard to see that small. I did put this on your one note in case you want to look at it, and I think it was on the There we are. There's ten of us right there. Lori in the middle, in the red, is leaving us at the end of December. We will be back to nine again at that point. I took a cue from Steve Marks on his budget presentation and I put in here how many years people have been. Now, if Lori was still here, she's another thirty-six-year employee. And our average then is a little over fourteen years within the department. Once we lose her, we're down to about eleven. I still have some, you know, three long-term employees. My three people at the thread counter, my customer service reps, are all very new to us though. They're at least two years and under. So they're still learning that that job, that Craig Wall, my accounting manager, he's been there nearly thirty-six. Our accounts payable specialist Kerry's been there over twenty-four years. And outside of that, it kind of drops off pretty quickly. So I think we'll see some big changes in finance in the next couple of years. New ideas, new people, and that's always exciting. We do a lot of different things, as you know. The accounting piece of us is just a lot, you know, accounts payable, payroll, special billings, we do capital assets. We do financial statements, we do budgeting. And so there's, there's all of that that kind of wraps up. You know, accounting wise, there's myself, there's my accounting manager Craig. And then we have Marnie, who's our senior accountant, and that's pretty much it. We're we're full, I'll be honest with you. You know, we, there's, it's, it's hard to push that stuff out with all the new Gatsby regulations that come out all the time. We are, we are constantly on the move to try to make sure that we are doing things the right. Treasury, so Lori left. Treasury manager was promoted from within the department. That's now Elena Quist. So she takes care of investments, debt, tried all the So she takes care of investments, debt, uh, tried all the reconciling. The interesting piece about Elena, she's very techy. And she is the one that is in charge of, we're nearly there with our click to gov, allowing people all this online access. She's working on making sure other things are remote and more efficient and more able for our community to get in and see and be able to utilize some of the services that we have. She's very focused on website information. So that's going to be pretty exciting to see how she manages that piece. Uh, utilities, so I have a, excuse me, I have a finance operations supervisor, that's Jennifer Harrick. She supervises the three front counter customer, um, service reps, and they do all that stuff. They do all the utilities, they do the billing, they manage the meter reads, they manage customer service, payments, late notices, disconnects, um, all of that. So they are, they find themselves, um, busy and really cyclical pieces of the month. It's those pieces where they're not quite so is where we're going to start pushing down some more accounting duties to them. Try to fill up those pieces of time and get that off some other people's desks. It's one of our goals for this year. Finance by itself, it's almost one point four million. I'm nine and a half because I pay for half of Carrie, because Carrie is my deputy city clerk. Um, we do same things, postage for all departments, I do the copier for us in the mayor's office. The state auditor expenses, which we can address in a moment. Um, obviously there's banking expenses and elections during election years. The state auditor expenses have risen pretty dramatically over the last three years. Um, I had a long chat with them this year about why that is and what's happening there and what else can we do? We do a lot of pre-work for them so that they can come in and just see what's there. Here's what we provided, they could double check it and get in and out the door, and it's just taking longer for these audits. Gone back to having an in-person audit because I really thought that would help us save some money, and it did not. So now I'm trying to figure out how to make it a hybrid audit, put more stuff electronically that they can grab that on their secure site. Their side that way. Uh, they realized that I'm unhappy with the cost of the audit and the length of audit. Um, I, I passed that along, I have passed that. Administration isn't very good with that, happy with that. Now there's finance committee, and so they're working hard. She tells me statewide, they're trying to work on maybe some efficiencies on their part to try to lessen everyone's audit costs. So we'll can hopefully see how that goes in the future. I'm wait, my, my gray there is wages and benefits, it's the majority of my department. Our accomplishments, uh, we did finally finalize the implementation, less one department of TCP. Uh, that seems to be going well. We were able, what we're finding is, you know, we brought that on as an hours kind of an entry system that we could efficiently, you know, and electronically move up into our processing, uh, on Navoline. And what we're finding is, is we're just seeing in different departments, different things that maybe we haven't seen before, like, and, and being able to really do some analysis while payroll is happening. And I find, I know Carrie spends quite a bit of time on TCP, I know Marnie spends all sorts of time on it. And, and I think it is, is opening up some windows for us to have some, you know, be able to fine tune some of our, our hours in our departments and how things are moving. And I think it's, it's, it's a good thing for us. I think that came, we weren't expecting that benefit of the, of the hour system. Uh, finalizing click to gov, we literally have the little machines now for the new credit card machines. She's just getting that finalized with the Executech and we're there, so that's pretty exciting for us. Mobile work orders is near there as well. And then, of course, we're a part of that meter reading and billing piece of the Tanalas. So as light department has this Tanalas project, my people are involved in that as well on the, the billing and the, and the meter reading side. Our goals are always to complete our financial statements, um, in time and, and get that audit. Try to review, uh, government finance officers and the Government Accounting Standards Board for increase or changes in our rules and for also things we might be able to do differently, um, it's just in a more inefficient manner. Um, my big thing there at the bottom is also, oh, I'm going to go back up to our department handbooks. So one of my big things this year is I really would like with people leaving and, you know, coming and going, I think that just basic handbooks, whether they're electronically or in a binder, I'm old, so I'm thinking binder, but, um, you know, to really explain why we do what we do, not just the process, not take this piece of paper and go hand to carry, but why we do that and where, where is the law that told us we had to do that? And so we're doing a lot of research into that now as to the whys. Why is that happening? And, um, it's, it's, it's really enlightening for my younger people because they just, you know, for them to realize there's a, an outside source you need to go to to verify everything, I think that's a really good training method for them. And of course succession planning, um, with Lori leaving, she's my first thirty-six-year, Craig and I are a couple of years out probably still, but that's a, that's going to come up fairly quickly in a couple of years after us is there goes our accounts payable. Um, it's important that I think we're able to, I'll be honest with you, I've spent a lot of time here and I've put a lot of time and effort into getting the finance department to work well, and I want to see it work well after I leave. I want to make sure we're set up well for that, and that's a really important piece to me. Um, I'm going to cross over to utility stats, so, you know, reconnects being what they are after someone's disconnected. Door hangers, that orange, that's what happened today. We sent out door hangers, there's about two hundred and forty of them. That's pretty average for us. So what that means is someone's bill was due on the fifteenth, they've received two late notices already. This is the notice they receive that says tomorrow the power is going to be terminated if they don't contact us somehow. So that's always a big and a busy day for us. Um, and then, of course, the, the line crew, Jerry, and if he needs help, I think he pulls in from some of the other line group. They go out and they deliver those by hand, and then tomorrow, um, anybody left out that, that then has not taken care of that will be terminated. Um, that typically runs around forty people. Um, so we'll, we let, you know, we try to manage that around breaks at the university. A good chunk of our people here are students, and so we try to make sure that they know when those are. We try not to make those things happen when we have big gaps of people gone from town. But you can see, um, it's interesting when I looked at that in the, the twenty and twenty-one, so that twenty right there, uh, you can see where the students left for a while, you know, with COVID, and now they're starting to come back. You can see where the cut-ins pop back in again then. So you can see we're kind of rebounding to normal. This is our utility accounts bill, slow steady increase, you know, kind of flat a little bit, but, um, our accounts bill for electric, water, sewer and garbage. Uh, I'm just going to kind of pop right through these additional budgets, just holler at me if you want me to stop, but I'm going to go pretty quickly. Uh, our jail expenses, court kind of mentioned those a little bit when they were talking, they've kind of gone up and down over time. Um, you know, several years ago, Terry, um, implemented using like, tried to defray some of those costs, and that certainly worked. And now they have other, other things that are through their therapeutic court, which has certainly helped to keep our, um, our jail budget even, you know, and not going up any longer. Outside jobs, primarily this is for the fire department, and it's when they do some EWU stuff and work, but primarily it's for when they go on a state mode. They get called out on a fire, they get very able to send a couple of people out there. We can pull their overtime into this fund and keep it out of their operational overtime because this will get reimbursed. And that way it keeps operational, the chief can manage his operational overtime separately from his overtime costs by, um, outside jobs. Uh, lodging tax, hotel motel, we pretty much budget that whole budget in case something happens, uh, we meet on that quarterly. And of course then those come to you for, for confirmation, what's been funded so far in two thousand twenty-three is listed there. Information technology, as you all know, we have a new IT, IT network manager, Executech. Um, that contract was a little more than we were paying, and so that has kind of eaten into my reserve in that, in that IT budget. There are some things that are coming forward that they think they're probably going to have to look at. So I budgeted a little more for next year in this fund so I can address some of those issues. Some of the bigger ones that we can put off for a future year, we've always been pretty good about doing that. But I want to make sure that our, our network functions correctly for all of our departments and they're able to get their jobs done. A debt service, six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, as you recall, we talked about that. Or what that's going to be our next year's payment for our general obligation bond for the pool. Capital project, the first one, so I had to put the roundabout sign because I really like roundabouts. And Todd, Todd needed some money to help with that roundabout project. Um, but that, you know, the whole, we, we budget the whole thing in case something comes up that that's needed for the, you know, one point six. But there is, I believe, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or maybe a hundred and sixty that Todd requested for a city match for this roundabout. My other fun picture is here, a pool, how exciting. We have the pool construction fund. Um, we did six point five in that this year, and then next year we'll be able to know what that final amount is to finish that up. It's pretty exciting. It's exciting for Public Works because they're so involved, exciting for Mark. It's exciting for me because I get to feel like I have a part in it this way, that we get to help manage that part. Unemployment, we have a little under a hundred thousand dollars in cases that he needs that. We self-assess ourselves per employee. We haven't done that for several years after we got to this level. I really didn't think there was a need to do that anymore, so this is going to sit and hold tight until, and we won't be assessing ourselves until the need arises again. And equipment rental, there's eleven pieces of equipment the departments can rent from equipment rental, um, to use for their various needs in their projects. Mostly that's public works and streets. There's a budget of eighty-one thousand dollars in there, and that includes paying the debt. There's three pieces of equipment, two pieces that have debt, and then that includes some maintenance on those equipment as well. This is really tiny and I'm really sorry, and you have it hopefully in front of you, but this is our ARPA funding. Um, you know, I haven't brought that up recently, we haven't changed it recently. But that we still are down to, I mean, if you look over there, you can see under, underwear, it says ARPA thirteen is all the infrastructure projects. Todd, um, manages all of that, and those are, you know, you're looking at things now like the cover, the roof, the reservoir. This clay street, as we, you know, we spent quite a bit there already, so as, as he goes through those projects, I'm kind of update my spreadsheet, and I just wanted you to have that again, because you haven't seen it in a while. And that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Cindy. Any questions for Cindy on the finance budget? How about in the crowd? Anybody, public comments? Since we're in a public hearing? No, thank you.
Your Honor, I just want to make a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, thank you again, Cindy, um, Mark too for your presentation. But I'm, I'm kind of glad I won't be around to see this, um, transition, um, happen when all you leave because I hate saying goodbye. So, and that's not why I'm not there tonight. So, um, I just want to say that, but, um, we have some amazing employees, um, uh, you're very much appreciated. So I just want to say thank you. That's all.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Cindy. Mark, let's do Parks and Rec.
Now the more fun budget. Admin budget, yeah, boring, now we're getting the fun budget. So Parks and Recreation, again, this slide really didn't change from last year. Um, you know, just the operation maintenance of our city parks, our open spaces, uh, you know, rather than calling it the swimming pool, our aquatic facility, because it's going to be much more than, than just a, you know, old style pool. Uh, the Ren Pearson Community Center, um, we run a lot of recreational programs. Um, those expand, uh, every year, different offerings, our youth programs, our preschool classes, um, athletics-related swimming lessons, um, senior activities, all the special events that we participate in like Mayfest and Honeymoon Hoopla. Uh, you know, we do facility management, then, um, you know, working on some of our adult programs as well. There's really too many, uh, you know, accomplishments to, to list. You, you have a more thorough list, uh, that was in, in sort of your packets, but, um, you know, youth sports, uh, have had a nice rebound after COVID. Um, we're seeing some great participation in soccer and, and basketball. Uh, karate, um, again, this year is, is a, um, very well-attended, uh, program. Uh, Chris, the instructor there does, does a wonderful job with kids. Um, Kelly's done a, a really good job reaching out to Eastern, you know, and connecting with their recreation and, and tour degree. Um, she goes up there from time to time to talk to their classes, um, you know, kind of a win-win benefit. You know, we expose them to, you know, Cheney Parks and Rec as we, we tend to use, you know, a lot of, uh, Eastern students and, and high school students as, as temporary employees with a lot of our recreation programs. Um, the drowning prevention program, um, that's something we would certainly let to continue with partnership and Spokane Parks Foundation. Um, that, that's just a great life-saving, uh, skill that, that we can certainly help educate the community on. Um, the SEEK funding, uh, that was great. That helped us cover the cost of, of CASLO and then some of the various camps that we've done from sports camps to the teen hiking camp, um, that, that was great. Um, I thought the Haglen Pool Park Event was one of the best things we did last year, but, uh, brought the community together. Um, with the help of our consultant to collect feedback on the amenities that, that our community is most interested in and the new aquatics facility. Uh, we estimated around three hundred and fifty citizens came. Um, I thought it was a great event. We fed everybody hot dogs, there was some live music. Um, I, I just thought that was a, a really nice and, and well-done event. Uh, we received eight hundred and fifty surveys on the new aquatic facility. That's a lot of surveys. That's probably the biggest response we've ever had to something like that we've sent out. So, um, we took a lot of that into account, uh, when we worked with NAC on, you know, potential designs and, and ideas for the pool. Touch Truck, Touch Truck continues to grow in popularity. Um, we were near seven hundred people this year that showed up to, you know, kind of touch and, and look at all of our city vehicles and, and equipment and things. It's a, a really fun event. The Trick or Treat Trail continues to grow in popularity as well. Um, e- even in, in sort of foul weather, we get a lot of folks out there that really enjoy, enjoy that event and, and some of the other things we do on Halloween. Um, new programs I've talked about, we, we do new programs all the time, and we're really trying to appeal to a wide range in the community. You know, I, I will say, you know, years ago, we, we primarily kind of did seniors, we did youth. Um, tried to get in with teens, really weren't successful there, but, you know, I think with the number of programs that are out there now, um, I think we're appealing to a broader spectrum of the community and, and will continue to, to do that. You know, some of our pro, you know, most popular classes were things like the cooking classes, the, you know, online cooking classes. Everybody seems to, to really enjoy those. Uh, we did some new sports options, a lacrosse clinic, uh, did some teenager and girl stuff, adult pickleball and dodgeball. Um, those are just some, some other things that we did. Uh, we can't thank enough our sponsors, uh, who donated, uh, money for events that we did. Uh, STU sponsoring, uh, the movies in the park, uh, the concerts in the park were sponsored by our local, local, um, you know, uh, retail and, and local organizations. Some of the grocery stores, um, donated candy and things for the Sugar Treat Trail, um, DCI Cable, um, donated for Touch a Truck. Um, just really nice community support for a lot of our recreation program. Goals, uh, complete the demolition of the Cheney Munizole Pool Facility. Good news is that may actually be done by the end of two thousand twenty-three based on, uh, kind of a schedule that Todd's working along with the, the contractor on. Uh, we think it may be wrapped up by December twenty-second, um, as far as the demolition, uh, which gets us ahead of game, starting to plan for, you know, the construction once we get the design done. Second bullet point you see here, Salmay Park Restroom and Park Update Project. Some, this is something Todd and I have been talking about off and on for a little while. Uh, we know we've got a very old and, and sort of gross, uh, restroom out at Salmay Park. I mean, that was one of the things, West Plains Little League's like, can you please do something? You know, when we, when we want to host a, you know, a state tournament, we're sort of embarrassed by that restroom. And like, yeah, I totally get it. Uh, so Todd and I have actually talked about, um, replacing that particular restroom with one of the CXT, kind of the pre-made, just, you know, kind of set. Uh, we probably are going to move the location of that restroom, um, you know, down to another spot. And we may actually keep the, the, the brick, you know, rest, brick, current restroom that's there now and use it as a store, a storage facility and maybe even, um, you know, create maybe a roll-up window to do concessions out of, you know, for West Plains Little League, you know, just creating a more functional, functional space out there. Uh, some other ideas, uh, you know, uh, kind of looking at the trees out there, maybe, uh, you know, removing some trees, creating some more green space. Because I can tell you that, that field, uh, space is always at a premium between all the different youth programs, soccer and flight football and, and those things depending on the time of the year. So, uh, we really want to put some effort into that, and we've, we've got some, you know, Parks mitigation money to spend next year. And I think this would be a, a phenomenal, uh, Uh, we really want to put some effort into that and we've we've got some, you know, Parks Mitigation Money to spend next year, and I think this would be a a phenomenal uh, project to to spend that on. Uh, we continue to look and, you know, offer and run new adult sports programs. Uh, I think there's appetite for that, you know, pre-COVID, we we had some offerings. But you started seeing numbers dwindle, but you know, I think people are are anxious to get out and and do new things. So we want to look at opportunities there. I mentioned trees a few minutes ago. Uh, one thing we've talked about, uh, I think a Public Works and Utilities Committee was is doing an assessment of the trees in the city, and this is more than just parks, but. Um, there there's some trees I know in the parks that that don't look great, and I think bringing in, you know, potentially an arborist to take a look at at some of the trees and. Uh, make some recommendations on, you know, whether they need to be removed and they can be used for first pack to health. Um, I think that's that's a goal for us this year. Uh, again, working with Spokane Parks Foundation, they've been very generous to the city over the years, you know, funded things like the drowning prevention. They funded. You know, sort of passes uh, for kids um, and and you funded swim lessons and things. So uh, we'll continue to to work with that group. Uh, we'd like to continue to develop the dog park. Um, we've got a, you know, potential uh, grant for from Spokane Parks Foundation for. Uh, some amenities to add out of the dog park, which I think we were supposed to hear maybe sometime in March, uh, potentially about that. Um, again, work to create new partnership was partnerships with businesses and organizations that that would support our Parks and Recreation Programs. Uh, this is again, just a a very quick um, org chart uh, for our operation. Uh, revenues. You know, so keep in mind that, you know, Parks and Rec is not necessarily a really well-funded uh, operation. Uh, we get our revenue primarily from utility taxes and recreation program fees and any, you know, private contributions or or donations that come in. You know, just on the operation side, and of course we get, um, you know, REIT money and things, uh, Parks Mitigation Money and, you know, on the more capital projects, but. Um, this is what our projected revenues are for uh, two thousand twenty-four. Um, tax, tax revenue, obviously being a big chunk of that, our uh, you know, our recreation program fees, you know, we. One of the things we had to take a hard look at this year was the wages uh, that we were paying to our staff. Uh, we we were having a very, very difficult time finding, you know, Echo and Caslow staff and referees and things. So. You know, we we've made some increases to try to be more competitive, to compete for the, you know, good employees uh, with other entities that are out there. Uh, on the flip side of that, though, we we will be making some increases or have made some increases on on the cost of some of our programs. Again, the expenditures, uh, biggest chunk is is, you know, obviously the uh, full-time uh, wages and benefits for all of our employees. Uh, well, not just full-time, full-time and our part-time seasonals. Uh, you can see what we're spending on on maintenance and operations. Uh, and then we've got uh, some of the capital dollars put in there as well, but you know, I I have to give a lot of credit to to the staff. We, like the judge was talking about, being very lean, we are very lean in Parks and Rec. I mean, we're talking about. Uh, sort of shared resources between streets and parks to sort of maintain a lot of our parks. We do bring on a couple of seasonals. Uh, every summer, uh, to try to keep up on, you know, mowing the grass and trimming the trees and trimming the bushes and picking up garbage and, you know, those sorts of things, but. Um, we we do a lot with a little and and, you know, my my hat's off to our our staff for the effort they put in. Um, I I'll tell you that uh, Matt Meyer, who who's uh, you know, one of our equipment operators that's primarily assigned to parks. Um, he's done a a nice job really coming up to speed and and learning how the whole in entire irrigation system works. Um, learning from Rick Engel over the years and then, uh, you know, making some recommendations and things for some upgrades and. Uh, even lending his his knowledge out now to the school district, you know, and how they operate, um, you know, their irrigation. So. Um, a lot of, a lot of good things happen uh, within Parks and Recreation. So. Uh, I, you have all the detail in front of you. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions uh, that you have from, um, you know, council or or. Um, community members.
Jackie, sorry to keep you waiting. Come on up. You can come on up. What do you got?
Yeah, there was um, a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for uh.
For the sake of all those who are on Zoom too.
Oh, sorry. Um, it was the understanding of the park board that there was um, a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for uh. Parks Director Position, which does not exist.
So I'll address that. Uh, so we did a recruitment. Um, we did not get what I felt was sufficient applicants. Um, so uh, once we decided we had sort of failed search, we took a step back knowing that. Uh, at that time, we we felt pretty good about the pool bomb happening. And so our decision was, you know, let's use actually that money um, to help fund um, a lot. It's kind of a collaborative effort with with uh, Public Works. To do, hire a project manager, uh, facilitate some of the load off of Todd's play. And manage knowing that two thousand twenty-four can be a lot of work, you know, on the, on the pool, the potential Salmay project. And I'll add to that, also going out and doing some potential fundraising, trying to bring that cost, you know, the thirteen hundred dollar cost.
So that money's going to Dan Curley. Okay, okay. Okay, that makes sense. Um. Another question, this is kind of just my own question. Looking to the future, once the Aquatic Center is finished and then we have to start. Hiring people and will we then hire an aquatic facility manager? Like in years, my day, there was a pool manager. And that person then, of course, was in charge of the entire aquatic facility.
Once we get the design of the pool done and and we take, because part of that that design and the effort that NAC's put in is to also sort of lay out what the maintenance and operation.
Right.
Part of that is staffing. You know, what kind of staff are we going to need? How many lifeguards, how many, I'll say, front desk workers? Um, do we need a pool manager, can flex, you know, somebody over from, you know, full-time staff? I mean, the last several years, we had sort of a rec coordinator. Get to uh, support that whole manager. Uh, so we'll have to take a hard look at that once we nail down the design and and surely what all the amenities and and what we think costs.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks Jackie. Any other questions on Parks and Rec? Oh, uh, Mr. Valencia, go ahead.
I just wanted to say it was hard to hear Mark since he was turning away from the microphone and the answers.
I can repeat. So.
Thank you.
A- answer number one, uh, the funding that was going to the full-time Parks and Rec Director. Uh, we've repurposed to uh, fund, partially fund the project manager, uh, Dan Curley, who's assisting with. Uh, you know, all the the project management for the aquatic facilities as well as uh, some other citywide projects. Um, that we anticipate in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, and then we also talked about, very quickly about uh, kind of maintenance and operations uh, for the new aquatic facility. Uh, kind of what would it look like? Would we be hiring a pool manager? And and the answer would be, you know, once we have a design and and um, you know, some projections on on costs and things. And and staffing levels based on, you know, what the design looks like and the um, you know, the amenities and and how it needs to be uh, maintained. We'll have a better idea of, you know, whether we need a, you know, a full-time pool manager or part-time or what that might look like.
And from anybody else? Yep, go ahead, Paul. Is there anybody else? Nope. Ron, is that it? Did you get that?
I did have one question on um, the expenditure slide. Looks like there was a significant amount of overtime on the budget. Would uh, hiring more staff, the pool manager or the director, would that, are you hoping to lower that, the overtime?
He's looking at the wrong.
Yeah, that's actually not, i- it's kind of a miscolored slide. Our overtime is only like six grand, I think, that we put in. Um, so I think that actually sliver, you can see down there at the bottom right of the the actual grass itself. I'll I'll go back.
Large one, he's looking at his part-time season.
Yeah, so.
Oh, part-time seasonal. I I got, okay, I got you.
Yeah, so right here, there's there's the overtime right there. And then that's the part-time season.
Okay, I I think it's coming, the color's different on my screen.
Yeah, it's just that that sliver of the pie is so small.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
In front, anybody else? Paul?
Just a comment. I appreciate Ron being here on on the park board and Jackie so patient. I'm uh. In the questions, I know the, I missed the last park board meeting. I had a schedule and conference, but they were asking at that point. Uh, it was a year ago, and we had, we had the same org chart. If you look at the admin org chart, there's nothing in there absolutely at all for parks. You know, and I'm, I'm supporting. You know, Mark and the mayor on their attempt to try how we can. I'd like to get back to having a department head running our parks. We got a one point two million dollar budget and we got it farmed out to the city administrator. And to a part-time street supervisor. We're not even including Todd's time. And and they have a very good point, the park board, you know, how are we going to pay for this? Well, we haven't been paying. I I don't know that we budget Todd's time or even having anyone other than Matt, I would gather. I don't know his.
We pay for part of uh, Larry as well, um, one of our street.
From from the parks? So. The the point being is we've been doing this as an interim. For city administrator running the parks. And you know, at some point you got to be, you know, definite in, said what we want to do. Like, I see a significant need. For a city administrator to be working on economic development rather than trying to figure out how to get. You know, Russians, I mean, the city administrator is the one in charge of the parks based on our budgeting. And I can see that as an interim since what, two thousand eight? We've been doing this or two thousand?
Two thousand nine.
So it's.
When Simmons, when Simmons left.
It's been that, God.
So it's really, I mean, at a certain point, I mean, you, you got day-to-day stuff going on that we cannot expect a city administrator and a public works director. If we want, you know, it's not uncommon to have parks maintenance taken care of by public works, but we should do it in a definite manner. So I look forward to continuing with using, uh, you know, we've talked about Dan's kind of more of an organic approach, and I think. It bodes well where we, if you bring someone in and it don't work, then you've got an issue with full-time employee that. This way we can, we've got flexibility all the way around, but with what our park board is saying, I know we're looking at the budget where. At a certain point, we need to come to grips with as much as our public interfaces with our parks department. I I don't think we're giving it the. The supervision attention that it deserves. And uh, case in point, I think as far as this fifth year of parking is really getting to be old. And having our people having to stop what they're doing to deal with that, we should have that, you know, officially assigned to somebody's. But we're working towards it. It's going to be a busy year coming up. I look forward to the day when we have a different org chart.
I look forward to the day we can afford a different org chart.
Well, we, yeah, we're never going to be able to afford it if we don't start trying. I mean, that's the way it works. I mean, you'd be amazed at what you can do if you just dig in and take a look at.
Thanks, Paul. Anything else for parks or admin or finance? If there's none, I'm gonna. Going once, going twice, anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing for our governmental funds budget presentations. Thank you all very much. How's everybody feeling?
I think we need a break.
Motion, we need a break. Okay, let's do, let's take a, let's make it ten.
Ten minute break.
Ten minute break.
Oh, for sure.
Todd, you ready? You're ready? Got your coffee?
I'm ready.
All right, let's roll into our resolutions. Our first one's Resolution F one eight four, the Terra Vista Lift Station Repair Project Amendment One. Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, as you recall, uh, this was just an amendment one. Uh, when we went in and did the pumps, uh, we found that we had a whole manifold system. On, so just kind of band-aiding that. So it was an increase uh, of right around fifty-one thousand. Uh, actually designed and and build a manifold and had it installed. So it's something that uh, it it hopefully will hold out. And it's going to take about two to three months to build when we start the pump. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Terra Vista is about. Oh, probably over twenty years old, right around twenty years old. Any questions?
Thanks, Todd. Any questions for Todd on this amendment, project amendment?
Oh, this has been a subject with Public Works, uh, committee. Todd, have we, and maybe our our legal as well, have we made any? I guess headway with regard to an agreement on this or?
Yes, we do have a uh, actually a deed to uh.
Sort of belongs to us now.
Not yet.
Oh.
This, this one is different. Uh, this one is a a final plat was approved. Uh, dedication of that lot, but it did go into our our name. So we're trying to just clean up the paper. And and it will probably take a deed to to send out, Mr.
So uh, with that, we're not donating to his, I mean, what? Could he back out altogether after he fixes thing up? Or do we have to go to further legal action?
It would be hard on a plat. The the plat dedication was.
So we're just still waiting for a signature. Meanwhile, this thing goes completely got a big mess.
He dedicated it via the plat, but we just don't have the deed signed. And it was owned, I think, I think title was in an HOA, which has now been administrated.
Yeah, they always do.
Yeah.
Well, we we have to fix this thing or we got to. As we talked at, well, it works, that's what we're up to. So I'd make the motion to approve Resolution F dash one eight.
A second. Thank you for the motion. A second to approve Resolution F one eight four. Any final questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Todd. Resolution F one eight four passes. Resolution F two zero three, well, two rehab project.
Certainly, we had this budgeted this year for a, well, basically a general well rehab. Uh, got a little nervous with well one. Uh, we we were able to uh, tackle that with some warranty. Well, two, um, specialty pump service uh, just submitted the bid. It's very hard uh, to find companies that are. Been the only one. We did uh, reach out to HTO Service and Vogel Pump, and they indicated that they don't do that type of thing. With that, I'd recommend approval for well two rehab at uh, forty-three thousand three hundred and fifty.
Thanks, Todd. Questions for Todd on the rehab project?
We hoping to get more gallons per minute out of that one or?
No, that that one's a pretty uh, rock-solid well. Um, but we do have some clay valve um, things that we want to take a look at, maybe some.
How many gallons a minute out of that?
Uh, that one is uh, right around three hundred gallons.
Todd, is specialty pump the only one that does service in all of Eastern Washington?
Uh, I I, Eastern Washington, I'm not too sure, um, where where they, where they travel.
I'm just wondering why we couldn't get more than one bid.
It's because all the locals, they they just are. Had a few uh, on the west side or some down the Tri-Cities, but I don't know if they could really compete traveling all the way up here to. It's quite a labor-intensive process. I mean, you actually have to pull the well, um, take all the components out, lay the columns down, clean the columns and. And by the time you pull the well and reinstall the well, it could be upwards of two or three months, just.
Okay.
And they've done workforce, but in the past, yeah, quite a bit. They know our system pretty well.
So I I just always struggle with one bid. It's a struggle.
Sorry.
That's why they call it specialty pump.
Your honor, if there's no further comments, I would make a motion that we approve F two oh three. Second. Motion, a second to approve, resolution F two zero three, well to rehab project, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, thank you, Jill. Uh, resolution F two zero three passes. Position F two zero four, Anderson Road Lift Station Repair Project.
Yeah, when something goes down, everything seems to go down, especially in wastewater, so, uh, this is our Anderson Road. Basically what it does is it, it services. That ends, but it's a two pump system, very old. Uh, both of them went down, so actually we're, we're servicing that daily with our back truck until we get. So, um, yes. But hopefully we can get it, get those pumps ordered in. Came in, uh, right at seventeen thousand.
Thanks, Todd, questions for Todd?
We need the U B building and operations.
Well, I'm, I'm glad, especially pump, that's both of.
No, you're good, uh, I make a motion that will approve, uh, F two oh four.
Second.
Thank you, I have a motion, a second to approve, resolution F two zero four, list station repair and Anderson. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank Todd, F two zero four passes, F two zero five, the two thousand twenty-three. Community Development Block Grant Application, Todd.
Yeah, we just received the sub recipient agreement, typically we'll usually, uh, see those in June or July. Uh, they're a little late, but that didn't, uh, uh, hamper our efforts on designing, uh. And all of North Four Street, that's commented. Received last year, two hundred and sixty dollars. Access those funds and. Projects with that will be.
Thanks, Todd, questions for Todd? What a great program this C D B G thing is, holy cow.
I guess my only question was, would you do that in the winter?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
We'll have, uh, uh, pretty much everything designed as we can and be able to. Um, probably get more favorable bids if we go out in January, uh, February.
Sounds great.
This is another side, it's hugely successful in that we sync this up with our. Residential street pool.
Yeah.
And we get to use that as a match. It's been. Epitome efficiency as far as I'm concerned, so with that, I'll move for approval of resolution F dash two zero five.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion, a second to approve, resolution F two zero five, twenty twenty-three C D B G application, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Todd, F two zero five passes. Resolution F two zero six, the aquatic facility geotech services.
Certainly, we work with, uh, Budinger, uh, on the geotech and union services. For, uh, the aquatic center and have a proposal for them to do the, the geotech site survey. Um, once the building is demolished. Happily trying to get everything put together, hopefully we won't run out of weather. Um, we, we feel that the pool, if, if elder construction, uh, gets in there, they're ready to roll on the. Observation and get all the data for, uh, the building layout, the putting foundations.
Uh, moving really quickly on this, which is good. Any questions for Todd?
If there's no questions, I would move for approval of F two oh six.
Second.
Thank you, motion, a second to approve, resolution F two zero six, the aquatic facility geotech services, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, got it, thank you, F two zero six passes. Resolution F two zero seven, the downtown revisioning consultant agreement.
Certainly, um, you know, we're, I, I'm. Monitoring the downtown conditions, the sidewalks and everything else, I thought it would be, uh, uh, and it's been over twenty years since we did the, the initial downtown revitalization. Um, just thought we'd bring back, um, basically Sherry Pratt Van Boeris was, was the architect, landscape architect that was helped us out there. Maybe do a revisioning, uh, this could lend itself opportunity if we have to go in and. Preservation down there. Lend itself to sitting down and seeing how twenty years ago, uh, what's different today. One question is, uh, we need swoop somewhere and, uh, still trying to look.
It's on its way, right?
Society locations.
Have good news.
Oh.
Here in nine to. Four to nine days.
Oh, wow.
It's being shipped from Chicago, it's all done, so. Um, I'll talk to you more about that later.
Thanks, uh, any questions on resolution F two zero seven?
Is this a kind of beautification, how we?
I think we were talking about lodging.
No, no, this, this.
It wasn't budget.
No, but we have.
No, that's.
Mayor's got a big contingency, doesn't he? I'll move for approval of, uh. F two zero six.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion, a second to approve, res- resolution F two zero seven, the consultant agreement for the downtown revisioning. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Alright. Was it, uh, F two zero seven passes? Is that the one, that's not the one you had a question on?
That is, I was, uh. We did talk about that prior and that's exhibit A has been adjusted, okay, so I, I was gonna make that comment, but it's, it's been handled, it's already been.
Okay, gotcha. Alright, Todd, you're still there, F two zero eight Spokane Parks Foundation M O U.
Yeah, sir, then I wanna give a, uh, uh, really Dan Curly has been working alongside me. Um, he's been really integral in, in helping me get, uh, all a lot of these contracts. Uh, kinda rounded up at the Spokane Parks Foundation, he took, uh, he took the lead on that, uh, we set down. Find a way to fund this and, and, uh, uh, presenting a contract in front of you. Uh, they're, they're, they're willing to help us do some fundraising activities. That fundraising percent right at five percent, which is reflected in contract, I think, which is good. I'm very excited to. Partner with them and hopefully get some.
Thanks, Todd, any questions for Todd on partnering with the Spokane Parks Foundation? Let's hope they can get us some money.
Yes, we're trying. Thanks, it's a great opportunity.
I was gonna say, no further questions, I propose to.
I just thought I'd get you once this year.
You got me, yes, thank you. I move to approve resolution F two oh eight.
Second.
Thank you, a motion, a second to approve, resolution F two oh eight, our M O U with the Spokane Parks Foundation. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Right, thank you, two zero eight passes, thank you, Todd. Cindy, F two one zero, government charges and fees.
Governmental charges and fees, these are the non rates, these are not electric water sewer garbage. Um, there is one small change in how we are wording our public record. Uh, charges, and I did not tell finance committee this, because I forgot, and I apologize, there is a small change in that we updated the fire. Outside jobs to be the rate that it's supposed to be, so in my budget presentation, we talked about that outside jobs fund and so. Chief sends people up to Easter to work a football game, we bill them, and it's the rate that we bill them. That's what was changed in this, so I'm happy to answer, nothing else has changed, and this would, this is all effective as of one one two thousand twenty-four. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Cindy, any questions for Cindy? I'd move for the approval of resolution F two ten. Second, thank you, a motion, a second to approve, resolution F two ten, government charges and fees, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thanks, Cindy, alright, let's move into ordinances, and we're looking for just second reading and defer.
This is actually our budget, I think the first one I have is the. The proposed property tax levy, is that correct? Yes, so I have ordinance Y fifty-three and Y fifty-four, this is our third and final reading. I have a note from the county assessor, they'd like to have this either this evening or first thing tomorrow morning, the county commissioners are dealing with levies tomorrow evidently. Um, there is no change in this from last council meeting, so the first one fifty-three is for our general levy, which includes our levy lift. There is a little blurb in there about our general obligation bond and how much we'll be assessing for that. Um, for our pool construction, and then Y fifty-four is for our EMS levy, please remember that is year six of six. So council will need to make a determination what they want to do about that in twenty twenty-four. To be in effect in twenty twenty-five, but for twenty twenty-four, um, it's in place, and I'm asking for the third and final reading, both of these.
To do those individually.
Please.
So if Mark doesn't have any questions, I would move for the third reading. Of ordinance Y fifty-three, entitled in sum, summary form only, and that the, uh, be placed before us for final passage.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion, a second for the third and final reading of ordinance Y fifty-three. Entitled in summary form only, and that'd be placed before you all for final passage. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Carrie.
Ordinance Y fifty-three, an ordinance setting the regular property tax levy for the year twenty twenty-four and providing for the effective date hereof.
Thank you, Carrie, council member Overhauser.
Aye.
Council member Schmidt.
Aye.
Council member Bartels.
Aye.
Council member Wiseman.
Aye.
Council member Guard.
Aye.
Council member Hilton.
Aye.
And council member Posthum.
Aye.
Thank you, Cindy, ordinance Y fifty-three passes. Now we got Y fifty-four.
Yes, your honor, I would move for the third and final reading of ordinance Y fifty-four, entitled in summary form only, and be placed before us for final passage.
Thank you. Thank you, I have a motion, a second for the third and final reading of ordinance Y fifty-four, entitled in summary form only, and that'd be placed before you all for final. Passage. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Ordinance Y fifty-four, an ordinance setting the EMS tax levy for the year twenty twenty-four and providing for the effective date hereof.
Thank you, Carrie, council member Overhauser.
Aye.
Council member Bartels.
Aye.
Council member Wiseman.
Aye.
Council member Guard.
Aye.
Council member Hilton.
Aye.
And council member, member Posthum.
Aye.
Thank you, ordinance Y fifty-four passes, moving on, let's go to ordinance Y fifty-seven, our twenty twenty-four budget, and you're looking for the second.
I'm looking for the second reading. Um, since the last meeting, I did have council member Bartels contact me that he would like a couple, and I think he contacted everybody, I think he sent that jointly. That he would like, he asked for a couple, he asked first of all to have this presented tonight, so here we are, we can have a look at it. And then he did ask for two additional items to be, uh, brought up for consideration. One is this power system plan for a hundred thousand dollars in the light department. And the second is a fire hydrant replacement program for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the water department. So I would open those up for your discussion and your determination what you want to do with that.
Which also includes a flushing program upon the hydrant.
Okay.
Yeah, we, um, I guess, I believe Public Works talked about the, um. Flushing program, or the. Fire, fire hydrant program, and we discussed it in finance, and we didn't really decide exactly how we thought maybe it could best be. Um. Be financed, but we agreed that it was an important project and we needed to move forward with it. Um, we were still debating a few opportunities and that'll all get worked out. So I would move.
Where would something like that? Could you talk Cindy a little bit about the funding mechanism?
Sure I can, so the light department, they have, so when. Last council meeting, I talked about these ending fund balances that every single fund had. So when you look at that, you look at their reserves, at any debt reserves and capital reserves, then there's this operating piece that will move into. Twenty twenty-five, since this is the twenty twenty-four budget. The light department has within their operating piece that hundred thousand dollars, and we would just move that from ending fund balance, and we would just budget that accordingly. Water department isn't quite as clear. Uh, they have two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, set aside for movement of cash into twenty twenty-five, and so. That would mean we would have to either cut. Some money from a different operating exp- uh, operating budget that the water department has. Come up with a different revenue source. Uh, but even by using that, remember that you're probably not gonna have a whole bunch of cash then that's gonna move into twenty twenty-five. To help in that beginning fund in twenty twenty-five, but that's probably where that would come from, either new revenue, reduction of a current budget. Or using that. Operating cash that will be left over at the end of next year.
And that two fifty, that was, that was. That, that was gonna be up for discussion, I guess, a couple of things we talked about at Public Works is potential ARPA. I don't know if there's any movement on any ARPA funds. Um, I, I don't want to tap into the mayor's discretionary fund, we, we talked about just using that. Yeah, so again, I think this, I mean, part of this was to have this discussion, to figure out, I, again, I, I would advocate and. For both these programs, obviously, but yeah, I think finding the money for this is gonna be a bit of a challenge. Um, again, there's, there are, there are reserves, I don't, you know, again, I'm not trying to tap into all the reserves. But, um, I do think we, we have to have this discussion.
So my, my question was, where the two fifty come from?
So the two fifty, so I, I can, I can break that down, I guess. There's four hundred and fifteen hydrants, and, and Todd, you can correct me if any of these numbers are, are off. But there's roughly a hundred and thirty-two hydrants that may be. And then we basically assigned an arbitrary five thousand dollars per hydrant replacement, and if you look at the one thirty-two. We figured we could try to tackle maybe thirty-five, forty percent of that, and if you go fifty times five thousand, that gets the two fifty. So that's where the two fifty came from. Again, in twenty twenty-four, it would only represent about. Replacing roughly four, thirty-five to forty percent of a hundred and thirty-two, call it aged out, or. So that.
It's six hundred, the one thirty-two was six hundred and sixty thousand.
So. The other thing, and we talked a little bit about this in finance committee as well, is that. We all know that the water department can't buy anything for any other fund unless it's water oriented, you know, so we have to think about that piece, ARPA wise. The ARPA funds, with the exception of the small business and the water conservation. Um, are at this point committed from council, now you as a group can move that money around. Any way you like, if you wanna reopen that and take some from one and move to another, that's completely up to council. Um, and so we can certainly bring that back, and you can have a look at that if you would like to. That would then just remove that infrastructure from other projects that Todd has, I don't think you have all of those under contract yet. So there might be some ability to move some money that way, and I'm happy to bring that back for you to have a look at, if you'd like to, after the first of the year or anytime. Um, you know, there's always, if there's an excess cash that the. Council wants to move around, you can always, you know, move general fund money to a different fund if you would like to, because you can go general fund to any fund. But you can't go backwards. So, um. You know, there's, there's, there's that option as well, I would. I would. Strongly encourage you to leave our twenty-five percent reserves in place, A, because that's part of the financial policy you just passed. But B, that shows, um, when they come in to do financial reviews, they do a financial. Um, kind of sustainability when they do the audit, and they look at all that based on our policies and where we're at, and, um. But I think if we chose to move, to use those, we would need to have a plan in place on how we're gonna repay those, and at what timeframe that's going to be. So I think that's the work that would have to happen here.
I think the finance committee should be assigned this task, and we'll come up with a proposal for council. How's that?
Perfect, there we go.
Is there any, like. One hundred percent against either the power plan or. I mean, at this point, without the numbers. I don't, no. We can go back.
You got a hundred grand somewhere? So I don't think there's any issue with, uh, we need to do planning for our. Our power, you know, grid and all that other good stuff, I, I don't think, so I'd like to see something to that come, come back fairly soon.
Yeah.
On the, I would agree with Theresa that. I think the hydrants are our. On the, I would agree with three said that. I think the hydrants are ours and we need to take care of them. But I'd like to look at a dedicated program and we just kicked around some things, you know. That we could do with regard to. Some other way to raise the funds rather than. Can't get a. Parks director because we don't have enough general funds. I don't know. We can start on another program, but I think we have to be serious about taking care of these hydrants. Because they're a public safety issue and I think we can bring back some proposals for twenty twenty-four here next month or so.
Yeah.
Before the third reading.
No.
No?
So we would amend the budget.
How we pay for it.
I mean, if if you come back in January or February and decide how we're gonna pay for it, let's follow up on the budget amendment and free up that money immediately.
There's there's ways to do it. We just, we just didn't have a lot of time to get in tonight. Because it was new and we had several things on the agenda, so we'll get it done.
I'd I'd quick question about it. I don't want to drag it out any longer, but I was curious, Chief Jenkins. Is there any possibilities that were in violation or possibly pacing? Play um, could be fine or anything for what we're currently using since it is a public safety issue?
Ben, were you thinking, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand just this one year and then more next year?
Yeah, because again, if we have a hundred and thirty-two, I don't, you know, again, we're, we've kind of guesstimated that the two hundred and fifty thousand. Will tackle about fifty hydrants. And again, I, if if our numbers are correct, there's a hundred and thirty-two potentially. That need to be replaced. Eminent.
No, that's six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So one bite to start.
Again, I think there's some. We have some choices, you know, we talked, just kicking around. You could do a dollar surcharge. I'm looking at dedicated funding for the. And you could do some other mechanisms other than pinching the general fund, but. We could be here all night if we start talking about.
Yes, we don't want to be here all night.
Yeah, I get, I guess just where I'm at is I I, you know, it seems like we have consensus that we have to come up with this program. I'd like to see this program implemented.
Yes.
Yes, so as long as we can all, you know, agree, agree to that and. Whether we set a date by February or March, but.
Yeah, I don't think it would even take that long. Yeah. We just.
That's that, I'm satisfied with that. Again, I, this, I really wanted to just flush this out, you know, unintended. Anyways, I I appreciate you guys. And again, I think they're both important programs and I'm glad. Thank you.
So with the, with the inclusion of the hundred thousand dollars from the light department, that makes this total budget then seventy-seven thousand six hundred ninety-nine. That seventy-seven million, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Um, and so I would ask for the second read to be for that event.
So I would move for the second read. Of ordinance Y fifty-seven in uh title and summary form only. And that um, the third reading be deferred to our next meeting on December twelfth in the amount Cindy stated.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion is second for the second reading of ordinance Y fifty-seven, our twenty twenty-four budget ordinance in the amount of seventy-seven million six hundred ninety-nine thousand. Five hundred dollars and that the third reading be deferred to our December twelfth. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Ordinance Y fifty-seven, an ordinance adopting the budget for the city of Cheney, Washington for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four and providing for the effective date hereof.
Thank you, Carrie. We will, we will do some analysis, kick it over to finance for some more discussion for sure. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes action items, public action items. Staff reports, anybody want to update on?
Since we're getting into that season, I asked Todd to to talk a little about our uh snow removal operation.
Yeah. Uh, right now, we're kind of cruising the streets, making sure all the campers and other trucks and all the boats are kind of. Message out. But yeah, we are approaching uh even this weekend. Looks like we. Actually could have a sizable amount of snow, but then looking at next week and get back up. How our operation is gonna work. Maybe fight it with some fraction. Plows out this time or get a certain amount of plows out to take care of the air. So that's kind of. Gearing up for.
Get your cars off the road.
Very quickly, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we have weekend meetings with N A C on on sort of the the pool design and and progress we're making there. And it's just a really aggressive plan. Uh, everybody's locked in and engaged and uh this morning at at our meeting, they presented some schematics and and some design. Options and really excited, you know, about what the what this could turn out to be. So just wanted to keep you updated and. Um, with demolition coming up, uh, you know, where things are moving full speed ahead. So, thanks.
Mark. Okay, my report. Holiday hoopla is coming up, kicking off on Friday, the December first. So I'll be reading a proclamation and lighting that Christmas tree at six o'clock down by the library. And council.
Nothing, thank you.
Paul.
I'm good, thank you. I'm good.
Jill. Anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
No, Brian, panel, Mark.
As we talk about snow, let's uh serve one another well. Help remove snow and be patient with one another through the winter. It's my encouragement to us as citizens and then uh. As we move into our executive session, we had talked about discussing something in the public safety meeting. Is that what this is? One, okay, I didn't see the second one on there. Okay, we're gonna talk about it. Okay, great.
Great, I was just gonna mention it maybe. Yeah. Okay, so we are gonna move into executive session per R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one Bravo to consider the selection of a site. Or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase and R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one I. To discuss the legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation. We're gonna start it with twenty minutes, I think. Is that is that good enough?
Probably thirty.
Thirty, let's do thirty minutes. Counsel.
Yep, and Todd.
Chief Beckel.
Carrie and Cindy.
Carrie, Cindy, Mark. Thank you, Dave, for your time. You, I don't believe you have to be here after this, but. Okay, we're back in uh opening. Second, a motion is second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.